I'll call this meeting to order. The November 7, 2022 special meeting of the Morris Townsor Planning Board. Legal notice required in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act has been satisfied and a statement certifying same will be executed. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. On the roll call, Sonia.
Mr. Nun.
Here.
Mr. D'Orphy.
Here.
Ms. Murphy.
Here.
Do you see an order?
Here.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Flowers.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
Mr. Slate.
Here.
Mr. Fischinger.
Here.
Mr. Phillips.
Here.
Am I missing anybody? Mr. Benoit.
Here.
And I, Sonia Santiago, here.
Okay, thank you. So this is a special meeting, right?
Yes.
We got a special meeting at Townsor Plan Board. So this evening's meeting is dedicated to the Red Bulls application. Before we get started, I would like to say one thing about last, the last meeting. There were some members of the public here who felt as though they were being neglected or pushed aside or not treated properly. And I did want to mention that that things do get tough around here. They kind of get anxious, especially toward the end of the evening. But if, you know, I'd like the members of the, of the board, the professionals, the applicant, everyone, please be courteous to members of the public who are speaking, who are trying to ask questions, make comments. We rely on the members of the public to come up with questions and answer comments that we may not think of. Board members tend to think of larger picture items and it's important to get feedback from the public for questions that we may not think of. They live in the area, they're familiar with the local environment and they add significantly to the process and we need to cherish that. And in the moment, things can get a little rough, I think, particularly toward the end of the evening, but please be courteous, please, you know, give members of the public their due. They're not used to speaking in front of the public, perhaps the way board members are, and it can be a little anxiety ridden for them as well. So I just want to raise that issue. One of the difficulties we know is differentiating between questions and comments. Members of the public, you can see when it's time for questions, board members tend to just ask questions and that's what it is that we would expect from the public at that time as well. But I think this evening, I discussed this briefly with Mr. Warner, we might be able to, I didn't, you know, run this by the board yet and I want to get their feedback before we implement it. We may do something different to you this evening that might be able to accommodate both questions and comments at the same time that might speed things up and it might give the opportunity for members of the public to get up only once rather than, than twice. Having said that, any board members want to raise any, make any comments on that?
I just appreciate your comments and I agree with you. Important to say that, thank you.
It's important that we respect members of the public and I know it can get testy toward the end of the evening.
I would agree as well. However, I'd like to suggest that we have an established time limit if we're going to combine questions and comments because there will be no doubt several people who will want to get up and speak. So we have to allow sufficient time in the evening, assuming we're still starting, stopping at 10 o'clock, but assuming that we do want to have everyone who wishes to either ask a question or make a comment to have an opportunity to do so. So I think a time limit on each individual would be something we might want to consider.
Okay, that's a good idea. Okay. We can proceed with the hearing, Mr. Warner, do you want to lead off?
One moment, please. Let the record reflect that Mr. Alessa had joined the planning board.
Thank you.
And to dovetail off Sonia's statement in that regard, it's my understanding that all two, four, six, seven, eight board members on the dais in person or remotely are qualified to vote this evening, should we complete the application and have a deliberation and vote this evening. So it's my understanding that those who have missed have certified that they have heard the entirety of the, I guess it was October 17 hearing. Am I correct in that regard?
Yes.
Okay, read or heard.
Three and a half, three and a half hours, yes.
Either's right. So we do have a full complement of eight board members available to deliberate vote this evening, should we complete the hearing this evening. Always important to make sure. Otherwise, the board continues to have jurisdiction based on the notice that was provided and the adjournments without further notice that have taken place. We do have an extension of time to act through the end of this evening. So I believe we can proceed, Mr. Chair.
Please do. Mr. Cassioppi.
Yes, so I'm happy to say that we'll be, we'll be presenting our final witness tonight. It's Eric Keller and Eric will testify with regard to traffic, the revised signage plan, and then as a planner. But before we get started, I have three housekeeping items that I'd like to mention and I wrote them down so I didn't forget them. First, we provided the requested letter from Mr. Zeller, the lighting expert, stating that the rendering is an accurate depiction of what it purports to show. He also attached an actual photograph of similar lights and I know we, we submitted some similar sites where those lights are used as well. Second, as the board requested and with a lot of continuous and diligent work by the Red Bull team, mostly with Rich and John Amarosa working hard, we were able to procure the actual FAA approval. We have provided that approval to the township. As we have stressed many times, unfortunately or fortunately, however you want to look at it, the FAA approval preempts any state, county, or municipal codes and regulations. In short, we, and I mean by that the royal we, are required to do whatever the FAA requires. Having said that, the approval requires the lowest intensity lights they spec. The lights are steady, meaning that they are not blinking and there's no strobe effect. The lights are only required to be operated from dawn to dusk, not during the day, in six locations, and the locations are generally in the interior of the site and they're marked on an attachment that we sent with the approval. And finally, last housekeeping item, there have been a number of comments from the, from the public and some board comments as well regarding field nine. In view of those comments, the Red Bulls as an organization have decided to withdraw field nine from this application. Mr. O'Connor, I knew you would be happy about that, Mr. Kessler. And, but let me just, just a couple of minor notes on the withdrawal. First, just so we are clear, there will be some work in that area for infrastructure like piping and such. So if you see work out there, it's not for the field, it's for the infrastructure. Second, we are not going to, we had planned to put a lot of landscaping there to buffer the homes from the new field. We're not going to do that, so we're going to modify, the landscaping plan will be modified to remove that, the landscaping on that side of Stockton, except for the trees along the road. Those will stay, just not anything between the homes and what is grass. So it'll stay as it is, basically. And, and lastly, just so we're clear, withdraw doesn't mean a forever prohibition. What I will say is once withdrawn, there is no current intention to build field nine in the foreseeable future, but if that changes at any time, we would need to come here before the board to get a subsequent approval. So that's all I have with, for the housekeeping items. So if there are no questions from the board, I'd like to call Eric.
Before we get to that, Mr. Warner, should we pose questions on those items now or?
They, they, they were brought up as housekeeping, they're not brought up with any, associated with any witness testimony and in my opinion, don't necessarily need to be brought up with any witness testimony, so.
That's my question, my question is, do we need to see revised drawings?
I don't believe revised drawings are required. Certainly the plant, our planner and engineer can weigh in if they feel otherwise, but I think the board can take the application as presented with the elimination of field nine and the associated landscaping, but for the street trees along Stockton and can take into consideration now that we know what the FAA has determined prior to our having to make a determination before knowing what the FAA has determined. And you heard it was low intensity red lights in the evening only, no strobe or blinking. And you could certainly take into consideration the fact that the letter from Mr. Zeller, as my colleague had correctly suggested should be provided, was provided since it was a representation that the rendering was accurate in accordance with Mr. Zeller's testimony. Now we have his signed letter providing as such. So I don't think any separate questioning needs be done. Certainly questioning and commenting can be done at the conclusion of the hearing. I suspect Mr. Keller, in the context of his planning testimony, is going to address everything, so to speak, in the context of the establishing on the, on behalf of the applicant the right to the relief requested. So certainly that would include FAA determinations, it would include all that we've heard and seen thus far, as well as the elimination of field nine, which is going to be a part of that testimony as well. So that would be the time for everybody to ask questions at the conclusion of his testimony. And of course, everybody can make comment thereafter.
Okay, so we'll do it that way. Okay, thank you.
Sure. With the chair's permission, do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
That's going to be, I know, I got to bring it back. Sorry.
Snuggle. I do that all the time.
Mr. Keller, would you give the board the benefit of your qualifications and experience both as a traffic engineer as well as a planner?
Certainly. Good evening, everyone. Eric Keller, K E L L E R, with Bowman Consulting Group in Cedar Falls. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute, attended a master's program at the University of Maryland. I have been licensed in the state of New Jersey since 1987 as a professional engineer and a professional planner, mostly licensed in New York and Pennsylvania. I have testified before this board, most recently on the Morris Marketplace project and have been involved in numerous traffic engineering, site planning, and planning testimonies before numerous boards in the state of New Jersey as well as Superior Court.
We would ask that Mr. Keller be admitted, accepted as an engineer, expert in the field of engineering and planning.
And if you could just clarify and confirm that both licenses remain in good standing this evening?
Yes, they are. Thank you, Mr. Warner.
No, sure. And I, and I take it you were accepted by this board and those other boards that you referenced as an expert in engineering and/or planning prior to this evening, correct?
Yes, numerous occasions, yes.
Defer to the chair.
No objection.
Thank you. So I'm going to talk about, I have four topics to talk about tonight. I will try and be efficient in my time. I'm going to start with traffic, then move to the signage program.
Sonia, put me back in.
Oh.
On the, guys kicked me out of Zoom.
So after signage, I'm going to talk about the parking lot lighting that came up. He's back in. I'm only talking about the parking lights, not the field lights. That was covered by Mr. Zeller and I'm going to conclude with our planning testimony. So starting with traffic, we prepared a comprehensive traffic assessment study that was dated May 31 of this year, which included traffic counts, an assessment of future conditions without the project, what we as traffic engineers call the no build conditions, and an assessment of the incremental impact of the project, which we call the build conditions. This report, which was submitted to the board, has also been reviewed by the County Engineer's Office in addition to the Township's Traffic Consultant and the county had no comments on our traffic study and as you're well aware, the county planning board has approved this project from the county's point of view. We conducted an extensive traffic count program that included all of the intersections that were contained in the original GDP for the weekday AM and PM peak hours. It was 10 locations around the site and adjacent roadways. We also, because of the nature of this application, we conducted traffic counts on a typical Saturday and Sunday from 10 AM to 5 PM, which represents the peak times for the academy activities that are planned for this site. And those are, those five intersections are those immediately surrounding the proposed site activities. The peak hours, peak hours are when the traffic is highest on the adjacent roadway network were identified and we determined the current levels of service at all of the intersections, the ten during the weekday and the five on the weekends for those four studied peak hours. Now, in, on pages 11 and 12 of our report, we note that there are some existing operational difficulties generally along Columbia Turnpike, Columbia Road, at Park, Normandy Parkway, and also at Madison Avenue and Normandy Parkway. Those are major intersections and it's not unusual that there would be some operational difficulties under existing conditions. We also note that the roadway improvements that were part of the original Columbia Park development, the GDP, were all implemented and constructed. And further note that Stockton Drive and a portion of Prescott Road adjacent to the proposed facility are located on the subject property. Now, we developed no build conditions, which we took the existing traffic volumes that were observed from our traffic counts. We applied a general traffic growth rate to all of those volumes outside of the development. We did not apply a growth rate to the interior intersections that we studied because they're not part of the overall regional roadway network. We also included specific traffic volumes from five other approved projects in the vicinity of the site and those are all described and detailed in our report. We then again performed the capacity analyses for the no build conditions, those conditions that would exist in a future analysis year without this proposed training facility. And while there were some changes in the level of service during the AM and PM peak hours, they were minor in nature, but the weekend operations remained at acceptable levels of service. We then looked to what are, what's the incremental impact of this proposed development? We calculated the trip generation for the proposed Red Bulls Training Complex based upon the individual uses, which include the offices, the men's and women's teams activities, and the academy and pre-academy activities. If the front office, the Red Bulls front office operations generally remain in Harrison, then our trip generation in our report is overly high, it's conservative, and the amount of traffic that would be introduced to the roadway network during the weekdays would be less than what we studied. So the analyses in our report are conservative and are still representative of the incremental impact of, of the activities. So, and also there's been talk that if the offices don't fully move here or don't move here at all, that that space may be used for player regenerative space. That would not generate additional traffic because we've already accounted for the players in our trip generation and they're already added into the network. Actually, they may actually reduce the amount of traffic because we're assuming that they come in and leave every day. If they're in for the regenerative space, then they wouldn't be leaving. So again, that would be a reduction in traffic. The trip generation calculations that we used are presented in table two. And we also, for comparison purposes only, we compared this to the trip generation that was calculated for the original office development on this site using the data from the Langen Traffic Report. We had, we went back and we calculated that because they did not study Saturday and Sunday peak hours, we added that into our trip generation for comparison purposes. And during all of the four peak hours, AM, PM, on a weekday, Saturday and Sunday, this proposed facility will generate less traffic than if this had, this site had been developed for the 900,000 square feet of office, research, lab space that was originally contemplated. Now, once we calculate the trip generation for this proposed facility, we have to assign that traffic to the roadway network. And for this particular operation, because it's an existing operation that's being relocated here, the Red Bulls provided us with zip code data, not only for their employees, which includes the team members, but also for the academy and pre-academy teams. And what we found when we looked at where the zip codes were and how they would approach the site, the large majority of this traffic will be using Columbia Road because they're coming from a distance, they're using Route 24, 287, 80 to arrive at the site and there is very little local-based traffic. And this is reflected in our trip assignment, which has 95% of the employee traffic using Stockton and/or the West Service Drive and 96% of the academy traffic, again, would be using Columbia Road to access Stockton or the Service Drive. We do recognize that the remaining small percentage of traffic would use, would likely utilize Prescott Road to reach Madison Avenue, but this traffic would be nominal in nature. Of the site-generated traffic, the only traffic other than that local traffic coming in from Madison Avenue that would travel on Stockton to Prescott would be the men's team traffic because the gated players lot is located off of Prescott. They would park in that lot, in that gated lot adjacent to the main building known as Building A. While the additional site traffic will have some nominal impact on the calculated levels of service, we did examine mitigation measures, which are limited to timing changes to improve the operations of those intersections and that would address the incremental impact of the site-generated traffic. I think that's supported by the fact that the County Engineer's Office accepted that and did not ask for further mitigation as it was not necessary. When those timing changes are to be implemented will be a coordination with the county. It is something that the County Engineering Department does on a regular basis. And I think you've heard me talk about this before on other applications such as for Hanover Avenue and Martin Luther King, that that's part of the county's normal practice of maintenance of those signals. As Mr. Barrington testified early on in the process, there would be the occasional bus that would, the men's team would use, would enter that gated lot, would come in, but that's a very infrequent occurrence and the design of that roadway has been appropriately designed to accommodate that bus movement. The women's team would park in the lot adjacent to Building D. Do we have the one with the site plan? Yeah, so Building D is in the northwestern part of the site where Mr. Barrington has, is waving his hand at.
If we could just reference the exhibit number? And we're looking at, if we have it on there?
The civil site plan, C10.
Yeah, but I think it was marked as an exhibit, but we can live without it if we can, we could just.
It's, it's part of the site plan set. So, so the women's team is on the other side of the site from where the men's team parked. Now, the ma, the majority of the parking activity will occur in the main parking lot, which is north of the fieldhouse, which is off Stockton and adjacent to the Service Drive, as noted on, on sheet SP-C10.
Which is also, I think, Exhibit A6, the overall site.
A6.
For the record.
Okay. And that lot is accessible from both Stockton and the Service Drive. And all drop-off activity for the academy and other activities on site will occur in that lot. Now, that moves me into signage, the signage package. The main project sign is located in the southwest corner.
Let's get these.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and so these were submitted to the town as well. They're at least marked because they're less than 10 days prior to this evening.
Right. This is a 13-page exhibit, which is.
23, I think.
823.
823 is right.
Which is entitled Red Bull's Site Signage and Graphics Approach and Inspiration, dated November 7 of 2022. It was prepared by Gensler and it was reviewed by myself and I had input into the primarily the directional signs. But I want to talk about the, the project signs which lead, help lead the traffic into the site and then the directional signs which will direct people through the site to the various uses on the property. So the main project sign is located, man, that's hard to read. Is identified as Exhibit A1, which is on the southwest corner of Columbia Road and Stockton Drive. That sign is five feet high and 18 feet long, which is 90 square feet. That's consistent with the declaration for the overall project and consistent, actually smaller than the original signs were for the office complex. And we'll show that.
Look at it now?
Yeah. So thi, this is the sign A2, which is at the Service Drive, the Western Service Drive and Columbia Road, is the same sigh, sign, but it is smaller in size. It is three and a half feet high and 13.25 feet long, which is 46 and a half square feet. As you can see, this sign is, the, the letters are internally sit, side-lit letters and logo has an opaque face. The panel itself is a metal mesh and then there is a red acrylic panel behind it. The sign is not internally illuminated. The sign is not internally illuminated, just the lights. If you can go to the night view, you can see that it gives a halo effect to the letters. The letters, the face of the letters themselves is not illuminated. They are solid, but the light comes out from the side, so it gives this halo effect on the sign. And that is, both signs are similar, though, as, as I said, the Service Drive sign is somewhat smaller. Now, there are also 12 directional signs along Stockton and Prescott, which guide the entering and exiting traffic. These signs were always contemplated, and actually, the, the signs that we're proposing are fewer in number than was contemplated for the office complex on this site. And in discussions with the TCC and the Township Professionals, we have reduced the size of these signs. They are originally 16 square feet, six feet high and two foot eight inches wide, and they will be reduced to four and a half feet high, about 13 square feet. We may go to a slightly wider sign to minimize the num, the lines of text on there to make the signs more readable, but we would not go any more than three feet in width. The purpose of these directional signs, as indicated by the, the, that, is to direct motorists to, to the destination within the site. And this is geared more towards the visitors to the academy, players who are maybe not as familiar, are not coming in regularly, whether it's a parent or other, other person who's bringing the children in for the academy. They may not be as familiar, so we want to guide them in. The employees and players know where they're going, and they're going to do it on a regular basis. So we're not really providing a lot of signage directed towards them. And then for the outbound, what we're doing is directing people back to Columbia Road. It's where they want to go anyhow, based on their destinations. But we also want to emphasize that they should leave, go to Columbia Road, and then help guide them, whether they're going to Marsh Town or to the highway system or to Florham Park or wherever. And that's what those signs will do. And the, the signs are strategically placed at intersections and at decision points so that the visitors are, you know, know in advance of, okay, I need to turn at this location, or no, I'm going to go up to the next intersection. And as I said, the only signage that's associated with the gated lot for the men's players is one that states that it is private. It's not identifying what it's for. The players know why they're going there. They, they know what they're doing. And it, we're just saying, we don't want anybody to accidentally turn into that driveway, so we're noting that it's private. There will also be signage along the Service Drive that will have generally the same type of message, though it'll be somewhat different because the uses that exist or are accessed off the Service Drive are different than those off of Stockton. Now, the directional signs, let's go to the detail of the. So the directional signs, as I said, are four and a half feet high. The, they are not illuminated. The upper part of the sign, where the sign legend is, is solid metal with letters that are attached to that. They would be flat with the face. I'm not, we're not sure exactly at this point what they, they will be made of, the, the letters themselves, but they will be attached to the face. And in the bottom of the sign, again, is that metal mesh so that the bottom of the sign is somewhat open. But again, these signs will not be illuminated. Now, there have been some other.
And you'll be able to, those will be transparent? You'll be able to see through that mesh on the bottom?
Yes, yes, to varying degrees. It's, it's a little denser at the top. If you look at, this is Sheet 7. You can see the, the sign that Mr. Barrington has zoomed in on, is a much taller sign. It's a six-foot-high sign, and you can see that the bottom of the sign is has visibility through it, and the upper part of the sign is solid, obviously, because you want to be able to see the letters clearly. Now, we have made some other changes to the signage package. These include, originally in front of the viewing area, to the north of Building A, the main building, there was a large sign that was, that said, Red Bull's Training Complex. That has been eliminated. That sign has been eliminated, and we're proposing to move the sculptural sign of the two bulls, which was originally proposed at the intersection of Stockton and the driveway into the main parking lot, move those two bulls to where we, by the viewing area. So we're going to place these up close to the viewing area, near Building A.
Is there some diagram you could show to show where they'll be? Just in case anybody's confused.
So B1 is where the bulls will be. That is in front of the viewing area. It is just north of the entry plaza to Building A, to the main building. Always stay here. There was also going to be a mural on the back of that viewing area above B1. That has been eliminated as well. And then there were murals, there was a mural proposed on the indoor building where G1, that was going to be up higher and larger, that has been lowered. Let's go to G1. We got to go to the next page. This is page 11 of the signage package, A23. And as you can see, the mural is lower on the building, which means that it'll really only be visible to people within, within the site, within that parking area as they go into the fieldhouse. So that has been removed from the top of the building down to the, to the bottom. We have also added two fence banners, which are on Fields 1 and 2, and on Fields 3 and 4, these will only be visible from within the fields themselves. These are backdrops to the, to the goals on those fields. The, those fences along Prescott have a green, right? Have a green scrim so that if you're looking at it from Prescott, you're going to see the green scrim. These field banners will be on the inside of that and will be no more than 10 feet in height because that's the height of the fence that they're going to be attached to. If you've been over to their existing facility on Melanie Lane, they have them over there, but they are not going to be visible from outside of the facility. So now I want to talk briefly about parking lot lighting. And based on Mr. Racioppi's comment, I don't have to talk about the lighting for Field 9 because we've eliminated the parking lot that went along with Field 9 on the east side of Stockton. And as I said, this is the parking lot lighting itself, not anything to do with the field lighting, which was well-covered by Mr. Zeller. So we're looking at the main parking lot, the visitor parking lot, which is only a handful of spaces on the north side of Building A, and the players' parking lot off of Prescott. And we focused on those because those are the ones closest to Stockton and to the residents. But they're, while they're closest to, there is still a significant separation from those lots to the residential properties. Now, in the main lot, there are 33 fixtures. There's four in the visitor lot and 12 in the players' lot. All of these fixtures are mounted at 15 feet. 15 feet is a fairly low height, mounting height for parking lot lights.
And I apologize for the interruption, turning now to the
The A24.
This is A24, new exhibit.
Two sheet set.
My apologies, Mr. Warner.
No, no, no problem. Two sheets set, and lighting plan, is it, or what's the?
Correct, lighting plans.
Thank you.
This first sheet is a, the lighting plan for the main parking lot. It also shows some of the lighting for the groundskeeping area and so on. But it, and it does show a little bit of Lot 9, but we won't have to talk about that because that won't be there as part of this application. All of the fixtures are high-efficiency LED fixtures that are Dark Sky compliant. We have also, at the township's request, provided a note on the plans that houseside shields will be provided where necessary to further limit any light spillage toward the residential units. So as you can see, just go to the next sheet. This next sheet is of the players' parking lot, and you can see the distance to the residential properties on the other side of, of Stockton of approximately 80 to 100 feet to the roadway. There are, just go back to, let me go back to the first sheet, sorry. As you can see, there, there are fixtures along the Service Drive and on the driveway from Stockton into the main parking lot. Again, those are all, all have a mounting height of 15 feet to illuminate the driveways. There are existing fixtures along Stockton Drive and Prescott of a similar nature. The only difference really, besides the manufacturer maybe somewhat different, is those lights that are already out there are mounted at 22 feet. So they're, again, half again is tall as what we're proposing within the parking lot. The parking lot lighting will not be on all night. There will be certain fixtures that will be on all night for security purposes, but that will provide a minimal level of illumination for security purposes. We are anticipating that, and this was discussed with the Red Bulls, that the majority of the parking lot lights will be extinguished at midnight. The average illumination in the main parking lot and in the players' lot ranges from 0.5 to 0.65 foot candles, which provides an adequate level of illumination without being overly bright and intrusive to the neighborhood. And there is no light spillage onto Stockton Drive or Prescott. So that is the discussion on lighting, and now my final topic is planning. So hopefully, I'll wrap everything up and, and pull everything together. There are.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Might it not be appropriate for us to bifurcate testimony to ask some questions?
Well, at this point, why don't we just finish and then?
I only get a couple, a little bit. This will go quick.
Last exhibit to air.
Yes.
A25, Plannings, Overall Site Plan.
Is this, if I may, there was an A6 that was the overall site plan.
This one's got a little bit of color on it for the, for specific to the planning testimony.
That was a colorized, this is?
This one's got some different colors that goes with the, his testimony.
Got, got. Okay, so, and I'm sorry, A25, and we're calling it what?
Planning Site Plan.
Planning Site Plan Exhibit.
Yes.
And, and if I may, I assume near the beginning of your planning testimony, you're going to go through specifically the relief that is being sought by the applicant?
Yes.
Thank you.
Second bullet point.
What, what's that?
Second bullet point.
Second bullet point, okay.
So Mr. Phillips has identified some technical variances for several of the accessory structures proposed on site, which includes the generators, chillers, one of the guardhouses, and some other ancillary structures. He had indicated in his review that these accessory structures also needed to meet the 175-foot perimeter setback, and the guardhouse also needed to meet the 450-foot setback from Columbia Road. Specifically, these accessory structures and the setbacks, and the setbacks we're giving are to the fence locations around them, the, the actual accessory structures somewhat further, but we're, to be conservative, we're using the fence that encloses those accessory structures.
If I may, though, and just to be clear, the 175-foot setback, if I recall correctly, is to the
Perimeter of the track.
Boundary lines.
Yes, correct.
And the 450-foot setback was from the Columbia Road right-of-way, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and, and in addition to those setback deviations that we're about to hear about, apparently, is there a, a are any or all of these structures also accessory structures in a front yard that requires that relief as well? And that may be a question for both planners, the applicant's and ours.
Well, the, the guardhouse certainly is in the front yard.
And it may be that, you know, some or all these items, you know, deviate both, fall in all the categories, front yard, 175-foot encroachment and 450-encroachment if applicable. You just kind of, we're going to need a little bit of a matrix, if you will, to just keep track.
Certainly. I, I, I think only that, in my opinion, only the guardhouse is in the front yard. All of the other structures are, first off, further than 450 feet from Columbia Road, and are also further back from the roadway or coincident with principal buildings on the site. So they would not be in the front yard.
If I may, maybe, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, maybe Mr. Phillips can let us know if he concurs with that assessment, so we know what we're working with relief-wise.
Mr. Phillips?
I think Mr. Keller is accurate in his description of the nature of the relief that's being requested. So we have guardhouse in the front yard, guardhouse 450 feet, or, or within 450 feet of Columbia Road. And I guess the others we're going to hear about are just within 175 feet of the boundary line. Would that be accurate?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm, thank you for bearing with me. I'm trying to, now it's out, at least for me. I'm going to be drafting a resolution one way or the other.
Understood. So, starting with the, is this like a second sheet or is this?
It's the same sheet.
Same sheet, oh, okay. The chiller by Building A, which is being highlighted by Mr. Barrington, the fence around that is 154 feet to the property line with the golf course. The generator by Building F1 is sorry, give you a chance to get over there, is 147 feet to the property line with the self-storage building. The chiller by Building 1 is 165 feet to the property line with the self-storage.
I'm sorry, bear with me.
No, Building F1. There's two chillers that.
And what was that?
165 feet to the property line with the self-storage. The generator is closer. The chiller sits behind it as you go towards Building F1. There is an enclosure around the above-ground fuel There is an enclosure around the above-ground fuel storage tank, also by Building F-one, which is one-hundred-and-sixty-five, one-hundred, I'm sorry, one-hundred-and-sixty-seven feet to the property line with the self-storage. That is on the southwest side of Building F-one. There is a refuse and recycling enclosure, also by Building F-one, which is one-hundred-and-ten feet to the property line, again, with the self-storage facility that sits in front of, closer to the service drive than the generator. And then, last but not least, we have the guardhouse, which is on the service drive, that is seventy-four feet to the property line with the self-storage and three-hundred-and-fifty feet to Columbia Road. The chiller unit at Building A is just over eight feet in height and is located behind a ten-foot-high fence with a scrim. Go back to the other side. The generator by Building F is just under ten feet in height and the chiller, again, is approximately eight feet in height and both are enclosed by a fence ten feet in height that has an acoustic scrim. There. The guardhouse is approximately not, just under ten feet in height and is approximately fifty square feet in size, which is detailed on Sheet SP-A point thirteen of the plans. And so those are the variances and a description of the accessory structures that we're seeking. Now, these are C variances. I believe that C-two relief is appropriate for these setbacks. And C-two is wherein the purposes of planning, as outlined in the municipal land use law, will be advanced by the deviation from the zoning requirements and the benefits of the deviation will substantially outweigh any detriments. Now, the generators and chiller units provide necessary building systems for the proposed buildings. And the guardhouse will control access to the site, which is located along the existing service drive. We note that the proposed guardhouse is in the general vicinity of where the Honeywell guardhouse was located. So we're placing it in the same general location as it has been in the past. The, these accessory structures, except for the guardhouse, are enclosed by ten-foot-high fences with scrims or acoustic scrims. And there are also existing and proposed plantings that buffer the view of these structures from the adjacent roadways within the development. The guardhouse obviously needs to be placed along the service drive to provide the necessary function of controlling access along the service drive into the site. And it has very limited visibility from Columbia Road due to the alignment of the service drive, the topography, and the existing vegetation. Now, the purposes of planning that are advanced, in my opinion, is Purpose A, to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands, and C, to provide adequate light, air, and open space. Now, we also must address the negative criteria to show that the relief can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantial impairment to the zone plannings and zoning ordinance. Now, in my opinion, there will be no substantial impact to the neighborhood as these accessory structures are relatively small in size and height and are still set back a substantial distance from the property lines. The view of these accessory structures is buffered by fencing and landscaping, both existing and proposed. Further, these accessory structures by Building F-one are proximate to the self-storage facility to the west and the ones by Building A, the main building, are proximate to the golf course. So they're not within proximate areas to residential properties. Therefore, in my opinion, there will be no substantial impairment to the zone plan by these deviations. And further, the substantial impact to the zone plan is the accessory structures are permitted. They provide a necessary function and support of the principal uses and buildings on site. The deficiency in the setbacks are generally nominal and preserve the intent of the setbacks in the zone plan. These structures are also generally small in size and do not materially impact on light, air, and open space. And that concludes my four topics for this evening, and I'd be happy to take questions.
Mr. Keller, in conclusion, you feel that the variances are justified?
I do, yes.
Thank you.
Board members, any questions on these four topics?
I have questions.
Really? Okay.
There's a lot, you covered a lot.
I did.
Is it on now?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I, we'll start with traffic. Maybe I'll just go through what you talked about.
Sure.
So, you talked about here and in your report, signalization being a consideration at many of the different intersections, right? And timing of the signaling to mitigate the, whatever, backups?
Not so much backups, to provide an appropriate level of service. It's really the left turns off of Columbia Road into the site that are, need a little bit more green time. The off-site intersections are the off-site intersections. You know, they've been issues for, oh, let's see, I've been practicing for forty years. And I studied Columbia and Park Avenue probably thirty-five years ago.
And there's been progress on that?
Yes, there has.
So, okay, but on those, on the changing the signalization, my question there is, how does that work? I mean, at what point do you connect with their, someone, the township, coordinate with the county, and the timing adjustments are actually implemented? Is that before, during, after construction? Like, when does that happen?
Generally, it's, it's after construction and occupancy when you can actually look and see how things are operating. And that would be a collaboration among Red Bulls, the township, and the county.
Okay. All right. I, I do have quite a few questions about your report, your traffic report. So I guess that would be the time for that now, right? So, and it kind of connects with the signage, okay? So you had your, the signage you showed tonight, which I haven't seen. You said it came in recently, right? I don't know, I missed it?
I think it's the same as was shown at the last meeting.
No, I thought it was different. Okay. Well, I haven't studied it myself, but I like the signs.
Okay. Ms. Wilson, let me just, the signage is in the plan set. What we did with this signage exhibit was to put color to it and to give you a better sense of what it will look like. But all the details of this signage is in the plans, except for the fact that the, at the request of the TCC, we reduced the height of the directional signs from six feet to four and a half feet. That's not reflected in the site plan set yet, but it is an exhibit. What, is that twenty?
Eight twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Thank you, Mr. Warner.
Okay. Okay. All right. Anyway, when, when you talked about a lot of the signage being for newcomers, what that, what I sort of connect with that is that at a lot of these different intersections, there will be newcomers coming through there. Not large volumes of people, but people who are not familiar with, you know, the intersections. And one in particular that I just want to ask your opinion on, you know, I'm a local, I'm familiar with the intersection, the crossing of the railroad track from Con Road to Prescott. And the, that road crosses the traction line where you have a lot of people walking and bicycles. And there's no, I, personally, I find that to be a pretty dangerous intersection. And I feel like there will be, you know, some number of new people driving that intersection coming to this site. And it just brings up for me, I'd like to clarify for the record, what, what is the process? I think we've discussed this before. What is the process for taking a look at whether stop signs are needed there for vehicles before they cross over the railroad track?
At the railroad track itself?
Yeah.
In general, rail crossings, and I'm familiar with, with that crossing as well. I'm a local, I've worked in Cedar Knolls for, I don't know, twenty-something years. I grew up in Hanover Township, so I know the area quite well. You don't normally put stop signs at rail crossings. I don't recall if that one has arms. I believe it, it does.
It does, yeah.
Yes, your professionals are nodding yes. It has gates.
Yeah.
So if there is a train coming, the gates provide that protection. To put stop signs there, I don't believe is appropriate. A short distance away, you have the intersection of Con Road and Old Turnpike Road. And I'd have to look, I know that there are stop signs at that intersection. I forget which approaches they're on.
And you don't believe that stop signs are appropriate because it's a railroad crossing?
Correct. And, and the rail, the railroad crossing itself, there's no need to stop at the crossing unless, of course, the train's coming and then the gates come down.
Right, that's from the vehicle's perspective. But from the perspective of the pedestrian and bicyclists who are riding on the traction line, the vehicles are not really aware that there are these other people crossing the roadway via the traction line.
The, I can just clarify that the traction line has stop signs for the pedestrians or cyclists on that. And they're.
So they're supposed to stop. Okay. That, that, this intersection comes up frequently. And I, so I just thought this would be a good time to clarify what's going on there. Another one of the intersections that comes up and came up in the previous hearings was coming out of Columbia Park on Stockton, trying to make a left onto westbound Columbia. That's the only way that you can exit Columbia Park and get onto Columbia, going westbound, I believe. And the, the notion that was brought up there is that there's already some backup and, you know, to what extent would this traffic compound that backup? So can you comment on that?
Let me just take a look at Columbia and Stockton northbound. Based on our calculations.
I know that's.
And the volumes that we observed, the northbound left, which would be Stockton left, is it a level of service D? D as in David. Levels of service run from A to F. D on major arterials such as Columbia Road is an acceptable level of service. It's something that, and that's under existing conditions. And let me just.
You're talking about the wait time at Stockton turning left onto Columbia?
Yes, ma'am.
And the level of service D translates to, what is the wait time?
I don't, because of the magnitude of the study, we didn't publish the average delay at that location. Oh, no, I'm sorry, we did. The, it is, it ranges, that's the weekends. Sorry, there's a lot of tables in this report.
Yeah, I know.
So AM build is forty-three-point-seven seconds, which is an increase of a tenth of a second from the no build. And in the PM, I think we optimized the signal. In the no build, it's forty-three-point-four, and in the build, it goes to thirty-nine-point-six. I think that was one of the locations where we proposed some optimization of the signal timing.
So with the change in the signal timing, the wait time actually decreases at the PM rush hour?
Correct.
Okay. That's good, thank you. Sort of a general question that, that I've heard. I've heard different residents talk about different traffic calming measures. They would like to see, you know, people have asked about, you know, striping on Prescott, stop signs and that. So can you just comment, or maybe our professional, perhaps Mr. Slate, can you just comment on how the process works? Like, if people who live in Columbia Park have suggestions for traffic calming measures they would like to see, what is the process for working with those suggestions? Whoever, whoever knows the answer.
Go ahead, Jim.
Funny, I was gonna say, go ahead, Eric. So my understanding is that some of these suggestions have been raised already to the Red Bulls professionals, and some of them are being incorporated. I believe that, and you guys can correct me on this, that centerline striping on the roadway is going to be installed as part of this project? Is that?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
On Prescott?
Prescott and Stockton, I believe.
If, if, if that's, you know, that's what we talked about, that the applicant is willing to put centerline striping on both roadways.
And then there was also, you know, some discussion on the possibility of a three-way stop at the Stockton and Prescott intersection, but I'm not sure, you know, where that was left off.
So discussion between the township and the Red Bulls?
It's, it's not, no, not a discussion between the township. It was more an internal discussion with the residents, the homeowners association, and the Red Bulls.
There is a master association. There, as I understand it, there are individual homeowners associations for, for the communities. Then there's also a master association for, that, that has representation by the Red Bulls when they acquire all of the property and by the, the individual homeowners associations. So that would be the mechanism to implement other changes. On the three-way stop, I mean, I looked at the traffic volumes that we observed. In my opinion, as a traffic engineer, a three-way stop is not warranted based on the volumes. I didn't do an Oprah request to find out if there's a pattern of crashes at that location or speeding or things like that. But from a traffic volume perspective, in my opinion, it's not warranted.
Okay. And if I can just chime in, and that's also something, once the. I believe I was sworn in at the beginning of the hearings, but.
Yeah, you were, that's right. Now, let the record reflect, you remain under oath.
Thank you.
That was a couple months ago.
It was a while ago. In order to implement an all, an all-way stop, that would be something the township committee ultimately has to pass an ordinance for. So, once this project's done, you can do updated traffic counts, get real count, traffic count volumes. And if it meets warrants, that's something the township can implement an ordinance to put in.
Joe, just as a point of clarification, these are not township roadways, they're private roadways. So you're still saying that the township would have to cast an ordinance for that?
In order to enforce it, in order to give someone a ticket for running the stop sign, yes, they would still need an ordinance. I assume there's title, there'll be Title Thirty-nine granted to the town?
That's an issue, I think that's still open for discussion.
So we have some questions remaining.
That's more an issue between the police department and, you know, the township and homeowners association. And that's something that's ongoing, separate from this development. You know, it has more to do with the overall roadway system, traffic concerns.
Okay. But it does come up as a question in connection, that's why I'm raising it. Okay. One thing that you did not talk about, which I believe, I think it was in your traffic report, was the, the walking trail? Was that in your report?
No.
Okay.
So.
I guess it connects with traffic and circulation. I know we've had some discussion of that here and there. And I believe there's, I believe. And I believe there's, I believe the Red Bulls made reference to completing the existing walking trail. I'm not sure. I'm asking a question. Can you comment on that?
This was testified to by Mr. Amorosa, and we agreed to pave the gravel trail along the service road and Columbia Road, except where prohibited by wetland permit. So we'll finish it, except where a wetlands permit doesn't allow us to do paving.
You mean the existing trail that goes along Columbia?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm sorry, did you say Columbia? What was the other road?
They also added the section that connects basically Aldridge down to Columbia.
Aldridge to Columbia?
Yes.
Okay.
You're paving the gravel trail along Columbia. From when? From where?
We extend, are you talking about the sidewalk, Rick?
We did a few things. The existing path that ends on Stockton near Aldridge Court, we're adding a new walkway, parallel to Stockton that continues down, around, past the detention base, and then connects to the existing pathway along Columbia Road. Portions of the existing walkway that are the stone dust are being changed to asphalt. With the exception of, there are a few portions of that pathway. I'm gonna say along the service drive where there's wetlands, there's transition areas where we can't pave those areas without getting an additional permit from D E P. So there are a few small sections that will remain stone dust, but the large majority of that stone dust path will be paved.
Okay. And one other question, I'm sort of jumping around a little bit because I have my notes on your report. You reference the use of the service drive. Who uses the service drive for ingress and egress?
That would be the employees and the academy. And I think, you know, in my opinion of doing traffic studies for a long time, obviously, the people who are coming from 287, coming up from the south, would get off in Morris Town, come down Columbia Road. Most of them will turn into the service drive. Some will go past and go to Stockton. Likewise, though, that traffic that's coming west on Columbia Road from Park Avenue and 24, most will turn into Stockton. Some may choose to go in the service drive because they want to park in a certain place in that lot. The players would not go in the service drive because they're taking Stockton to Prescott. So, but it's pretty much everybody else is going to use the service drive and then Stockton to get into the site.
Okay. Thank you. And I wanted to say, I'm glad that you've gotten the FAA approval. I'd like to, I don't know whatever there is in writing. I'd like to see whatever you have. I appreciate the explanation.
The county passes it?
Oh, we do? Okay. I have not seen it, but.
We can share it with you.
Oh, thank you. The 50-page report? I'll add it to the collection. And also, I thank you for the elimination of Field Nine. I think that's a good step, and I appreciate it. So there may be other questions, but I think I've taken up my time, so I'll pass it back, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy.
I just have a single question, and I sort of whispered to Kathy earlier. When I saw the directional signs, my understanding is that they are the same number and in the same locations, just shorter. Is that correct?
As our original plan.
Correct.
Correct. We didn't change the number.
When I looked at that, it looked very familiar, except shorter. So I'm glad that my assessment was correct. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Murphy.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of questions on the signs. Just probably, I'll start it this way. Parking lot lights. I'll go first there. The parking lot lights would come on, obviously, when it gets dark.
Yes.
And then they would shut off at worst-case scenario, midnight?
Correct.
What about in the morning? So like, we could have lights on at 5:30 in the morning till 7:00 a.m.? That would normally happen if these were office buildings. Office buildings would have lights come on before people arrive at 7:00 o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, I don't think, I'd have to check with Red Bulls. I mean, you know, if the players don't come in that early, the office workers, if they're there, I think Mr. Amorosa testified to somewhere around 8:00 or so. So, but we'll have to check, but there would be no reason for them to come on at 5:30 in the morning, I don't see.
Some of these questions could be, you've answered, it's just that, what is this, the 10th hearing now? Sometimes.
Six, I think.
Six. Sometimes you can't remember what we discussed. Did you say a couple of months ago? So the next question was field lights. Just want to make sure I'm clear on it. Field lights will come on, obviously, when it gets dark. And there's only two fields, I think, that are lighted? Is that correct?
I.
Four fields light. Could you just review which, I'm sorry, maybe this question for?
Field five.
Five.
Six, seven, and eight.
And they'll be off by 10:00 a.m., 10:00 p.m., I think?
Yes.
Okay. So then the only other lights I'm gonna ask about is the lights on the sign on Columbia. We have a bank on Madison Avenue that has major illumination late at night. So I don't want to see the people on Columbia to have to live with what we have to live with on Madison Avenue. What time will those lights go off in the sign? I thought it was a very attractive sign, by the way, but the question is, is, what, you know, is that gonna be a 24-hour sign? And is it advertising, obviously? The sponsor's name is on it?
We hadn't, yeah, I mean, we hadn't discussed it specifically. My understanding was that, like most of these signs, they would be on all the time.
Right, so this is a 24-hour sign?
Well, dusk to dawn.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Would there be any consideration to shutting that sign off at an appropriate time?
I would have to defer to the Red Bulls.
Mr. Assiopi, is there any way we can figure that out if we're gonna vote on it tonight?
We will try to figure that out. We're missing two key members. One's in Africa, the other one's ill, but we'll see what we can do by test.
Okay. Then my last question was, the directional signs are not illuminated.
Correct.
So what's gonna stop someone who's not familiar with the area, who's supposed to leave on Columbia, from finding their way on Prescott, driving up to Con, or driving down to Park Avenue? Would you, I mean, I'm asking the question out loud because I'm wondering why they're not illuminated.
Well, I mean, there's street lighting, because they're only four and a half feet high, they're gonna be illuminated by headlights?
I accept that answer. Thank you. That's all I have for signage. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other topics? Any other board members?
Thank you, Mr. Keller, for the testimony. I'm gonna jump around here a little bit, but we can do it pretty quickly. What is the average time parking lights, parking light lots typically go off in a setting like this? Is it midnight? Is it earlier? Maybe the professionals can chime in too, to see what other corporate facilities, their parking lot lights go off at?
I was gonna say typically earlier than midnight.
Okay. Is this something we can talk about to have those lights go off earlier? Mr. Assiopi?
Again, we actually specifically asked that question. Mr. Keller, I thought you said office buildings sometimes typically stay on all night, and the Red Bulls, for security reasons, wanted to leave them on until midnight.
You know, I mean, there's various activities that, I don't recall the timing that Mr. Amorosa had gone through. But you want to leave the lights on for some period after they occur so that, you know, somebody doesn't walk out and the lights go off on them.
Right, so the fields are, field lights go off at 10.
Right.
Give them 30 minutes to get to their cars and leave, an hour to be conservative, 11:00 o'clock, might be reasonable.
I don't know anything about soccer players, but I would imagine they don't just walk out like we do in an office building. They might want to shower. They might want to work out.
But the academy players are gonna, you know, the kids that are gonna be there are weeknights. They'll be going right to the cars, but the professionals, but I didn't think the professionals were typically there that late at night. And they'd be in a different parking lot. They'd be in the private parking lot, not the large parking lot.
Right, but there's also maintenance staff and other operations that would be there after the academy is done because they have to clean up. They have to make sure everything's in order for the next day. So they may be there for an hour after the academy players leave. So, you know, which is why we were looking to have them go off at midnight. You know, I mean.
I think we should have a further discussion about it. Maybe the professionals can bring it up during their questioning too. But something that I think is important to the neighbors there.
Yeah.
The other question then is, which lights, can you give me a sense of what lights are gonna be on for security purposes?
We typically work with the township professionals and the police department. You know, looking at, you go to whatever exhibit that was, 24?
Lighting?
Yeah. So you're gonna want to have them strategically placed, you know, probably, I don't know, probably six or so lights, you know. I think the ones along the roadway are on dusk to dawn. So, you know, we probably have one by the guardhouse and then scattered through this lot and also the player lot. So that there is enough illumination of that lot for, you know, security to keep an eye on, make sure that there's nobody trying to sneak in or do anything, you know, nefarious.
Okay.
Which is typical, you know, if you have an office complex or other complex, if the lights do go off at some period of time and don't stay on all night, that's standard practice is to have a level of security lighting.
Yep, that's fair. The private parking lot's gonna be gated. Are there any other access points that are gonna be gated?
Well, the entire site is gated.
For vehicular traffic?
Yeah, I mean, there's a guardhouse coming in off of Stockton, and there's one on the service drive. So access into the parking lots in the site is controlled at all locations. But the players' lot off of Prescott is, I don't know if it's card-activated, F A B activated, but it's only for the players and the coaches and trainers and things like that.
So in the case of an emergency, would they have sensors then for first responders, or security would meet them to open the gate? How would that work?
Yeah, I mean, there's a number of ways, whether it's, you know, an OX box or a squelch where the gates will open.
And then last question for the parking lot, are there, do you have electric vehicle charging stations in the parking lot and the public lot?
Yes.
Can you just show me where you're planning to have those and how many? Jim, what's the percentage, or Paul, on the township ordinance for those?
So there's eight?
Roughly the location within the pro lot, public lot.
There were eight in the pro lot.
Here, labeled as EVs.
Right. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any other board members? Mr. Flowers? Oh. Mr. Flowers, no?
Yeah, I have two more questions. On page 23 in your report, you talk about the state highway intersection, which I take it would be Madison Avenue and Con Road, right? And you talk about the light needing signalization there, correct, or needing timing?
Page 23, that state highway intersection is Madison Avenue and Normandy Parkway.
Ah, okay.
So, I mean, that's another intersection that's had challenges for quite some time.
Yes, it has. So the, I just want to clarify here, it would be the township's responsibility to be in touch with the state to adjust the timing on the light at Madison and Normandy Parkway, as well as Madison and Old Glen Con, right?
Right, but that intersection, because it's lower volumes, operates at acceptable levels of service.
Okay, it may be an acceptable level of service, but I know from personal experience the timing is very long sometimes, and I think it's something that could be looked at. And I know it's been on our, you know, it's hard to get through to the state, is basically what it is. And so I'm just highlighting that there is a remaining need there, and I'd like to see us pursue that a little further.
The state's focus is to move traffic on the state highway.
Yeah, okay.
That's their policy. That's what they're, you know, concerned with.
Well, there's room for improvement at both of those intersections, in my layman's opinion. And then I would also, you mentioned that the lighting in the parking lots was dark sky compliant, right?
Yes.
And can you just elaborate? Are there standards for non, like sport lighting, like for parking lot lighting that come through the IDA?
Yeah, absolutely. There's, they cover, I mean, they really cover parking lot lights and other types of pedestrian lighting and things like that. So, but these are compliant.
I was very impressed by the IDA criteria for the sports field lighting, but I'm not familiar with the parking lot criteria. So, but the organization seems reputable and sound to me. And if you're complying with their regulations, I find that, I'm glad to know that.
It's much easier to deal with parking lot lights and other types of lights than sports lighting.
Yes.
It's a completely different character, so.
Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. Following up on the parking lot lighting, I think for the benefit of the residents here, you've testified this could be dark lights, dark sky lighting. From their perspective, they live uphill or downhill from the parking lot, and the parking lot is a certain distance away. I'm assuming they're getting rid of the parking lot associated with Field Nine.
Correct.
So that make a big difference right there. But can you speak to the proximity of these parking lots and the lighting to the housing? And glare, spillage, how much they might see from the second floor? I'm sure they all have those questions.
Well, the pro lot is the one that's closest. And remember, there's a berm and landscaping between that pro lot and Stockton and certainly the residences. The lights are only 15 feet in height, which is on the low side for parking lots. The turnaround, which is probably the closest to the residence, is 150 feet away with the berm and landscaping between it. I think that the street lights that are on Stockton are going to be more of a visual impediment or visual intrusion to their homes than the lights that are 50% lower, or actually not 50% lower. They're a third lower than the lights along the street, and they're behind a berm and the landscaping. And as you move towards Prescott, the separation between that pro lot and the homes gets greater. So I don't know what the grades are between.
The fixtures are about one to two feet above the top of the berm, so it's similar to the top of it. The fixtures are about roughly one to two feet higher than the top of the berm, so.
Okay, thank you.
In all cases, if you're across the street, you're gonna be looking down onto the top of the fixtures.
If you see them through the landscaping.
I'm sorry, if you can see them through the landscaping, is that just?
Correct, yes.
And the fixtures have side caps, so you might not see any light at all from the fixture itself, only what's projected. projected down during the fog or something like that. Okay, I wanted to, you know, have that discussion for the benefit of the, of the residents here. And I want to thank you for reducing the size of those, those signs and of, of course for Field Nine in the parking lot. You said you'll, you'll continue to have whatever piping and whatever through there, but that'll basically be a capped grassy area?
That's a question for Rich.
Correct. We're gonna continue to grade that area similar to what's on the plan. There just won't be an athletic field. There won't be a parking lot.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's all I have. Any other board members? We'll go forward professionals. Jim, do you have any questions?
I have one question related to the testimony that you provided, Eric, on the signs. You said that there may be some signs that are three foot wide. Right now, the, the detail is showing two foot six. Is there?
Two foot eight, I believe.
Or two eight? What signs might be, you know, wider in order to?
We have, looking at this, you know, and we're still working on specific design, but you know, looking at it, D1.2, where it talks about accessible parking, we'd really like that to be on one line. Because, you know, we're trying to limit the lines. Since we shortened the height of the signs, you gotta have to have at least two feet at the bottom to deal with, you know, snow and other, you know, just for visibility as somebody's driving along. I don't have anything specific, but, you know, you know, we're trying to, to limit the, the lines. So if we could, like, D1.1, and I'm referring to the plant, the signs that are in the site plan package. D1.1 has six lines of text. That's not gonna fit on a four and a half foot high sign. That bottom line of text is gonna be, you know, down near the the ground. So we like to try and, you know, get deliveries and loading. You know, maybe it's gonna take some text changes. You know, some of those signs might be three feet wide. So it's still a significant reduction in square footage from what we had, and certainly a lower sign, and we're only talking about an additional four inches.
Okay, thanks.
If I may, in, in regard to that answer, just for clarification for the benefit of the board and public, the, there are no variances associated with the signage, so it would not impact the relief sought by the applicant, other than for purposes of the site plan as a whole, the board is considering a sign package. So you're asking for the leeway to go from two feet, eight inches to three feet wide on some of the D1 directional signage?
We're necessitated by the amount of text.
Right.
Working with the town's professionals.
I was just gonna say, subject to the review and approval of our engineer and/or planner?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
I like that subject to review. All else being equal, I think the directional wayfinding that everyone told him should be uniform and consistent in terms of the size. I just think that sends the, the kinda right message, and I think visually and aesthetically it's best. You know, perhaps there's a sign or two that they, you need a little bit more for the lettering, but, but I'd love to see that work within a two foot eight, which I think is the, the right kinda dimension.
Hey, sorry to interrupt. This is, this is Jesse. I can't hear anything that's being said. Sorry, Mr. Flowers. So what I've just basically said is, I, I think all else being equal, the, the two foot eight and a consistent, uniform directional wayfinding sign is better. Just aesthetically and to kinda create that uniform directional signage throughout the project, but since I think it's been agreed that the board professionals will have discretion to see if they go to three feet, I think that's sufficient protection. The only other question this may have been answered that I had that was prompted about the, the parking lot lighting and the guardhouses. Are the guardhouses manned 24 hours?
No.
They're not?
They're not.
Do you know what the timing is on the guardhouses as we sit here?
They'll be manned more than likely for specific events. There will be an access control system there. Red Bulls on site will operate it, so depending on the event, the function, sometimes they may wanna have somebody out there to answer questions or for specific events. But I would, I would gather that in a typical situation, it would not be manned.
Okay. Thank you. And the only other comment, Mr. Chairman, is I also would echo the comments of other board members that the TCC does appreciate the reduction in the signage. And the applicant did respond to a lot of the concerns that the board expressed as well as the TCC.
Thank you. Mr. Fisher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eric, I'm, just a few questions, and I apologize for jumping around because
Sorry.
my notes are a little scattered all. First, with the elimination of Field Nine, does that affect the traffic circulation at all? Are the same activities proposed onsite just in different places? Or how does, how does the elimination of Field Nine affect overall site operations?
It does have some impact on scheduling and, and certainly in our trip generation, if you look at it from a traffic perspective, we base the trip generation on the number of fields, so there would be a slight reduction based on how we calculated it. But I think it's just going to be an operational change in that when they might have used Field Nine, they're gonna use one of the other fields, so.
So is it your understanding that, that activities that occur onsite will still be the same? The Field Nine will just be absorbed into the other fields on the site?
Yes.
And again, I apologize for jumping around. In the main parking lot, there's a large drop off area. Where is, are any deliveries contemplated in that area, or are all deliveries going to the loading zone? I'm thinking, you know, the smaller office supplies, Amazon, you know, the bread truck style deliveries.
All deliveries go to the loading dock. And that includes mail and Amazon and, you know, et cetera, et cetera.
And then the two bulls, for lack of the right term, well, are they going to be lit in the, they're replacing the larger sign. Are they lit?
They are. There is a flush ground mounted light, and, and there will be, we don't have a ground lit recessed in ground. Yeah. So basically, it, it will kinda give a halo effect to the sculptures, but it's from underneath the, the bulls, up at the bulls. So it's, it's flush in the ground.
Okay. And then going back to my review letter, and I know we've gone through and you've corrected a lot of the technical issues that I've had. The one I wanted you to touch on was item eight in my report at the service drive. There's no left turn slot on Columbia. Is there any way to add a left turn lane there? Is it warranted? How? Can you provide some information on that?
Yeah. First, it's not warranted based on, on the volumes. The levels of service are acceptable. The county didn't raise that issue. And the constraint is the proximity of that intersection to the self-storage facility. And there's not available right of way to widen out Columbia Turnpike. Because if you put a left turn lane in going westbound, you gotta put at least a stripe that area on the other side, which means that the widening goes across the self-storage facility. And there's just not the right of way available in that location for it. And so.
And along those lines, is there any signage on Columbia Road to direct people into the site to try to push them to one access or another, or is all all site, signs on the site?
Well, you have the two project signs, which are at Stockton and at the service drive. And those are two-sided. A1 and A2, those signs. The only difference between those signs is the one at Stockton is about twice the size of the one at the service drive.
But there's nothing further up in either direction?
No.
Those are all my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
If I can, Mr. Chairman, just for purposes of the record, Mr. Fissinger, by your report, because I know there were a couple, you're referring to your July 28, 2022 report, which I believe was the last report you did?
Yes, that's right.
Okay, thank you.
Any board member questions in response to those questions? At this point, at this point, we can open up questions to members of the public. As I mentioned earlier, we were considering allowing the members of public to have questions and comments at the same time, but I'm wondering now, Mr., not all of your, not all of your professionals are here to answer questions at?
We can get to, we, we, we're getting to them by text, so.
Okay, okay. So if any, would board members be okay with combining, we can limit the timeframe?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, what?
Yes, let's combine with the time limit, please.
You're okay with combining? Okay. Well, I'm thinking.
Something we've done before is ask people to limit their comments to five minutes and then come back, you know, if, let other people speak and then come back for another five minutes if they have more to say.
So we could do, we could combine questions and comments to five minutes?
No more than five minutes.
Right, okay. Who's the timekeeper? My timekeeper?
I will just say that I, I, I feel like there's been a lot of testimony tonight, and I feel like residents may have questions about that. My personal view would be to perhaps limit the questions to five minutes, but I think comments on the entire project are a separate topic.
Why don't we, you can ask your questions, and then the comments will be a separate five minute max.
At the same time?
Yes, at the same time.
We.
That's acceptable.
So I'll note that we have an hour and 15 minutes.
Yes. Well, we wanna hear what they have to say. So members of the public, you'll be sworn in so that if you have any comments, you'll have already been sworn in for the comments when you begin asking questions. So if you got, if you heard me correctly, then you can ask questions. If you wanna begin a comment period, then we're gonna limit that to five minutes. And then move on to the next person. So the first person, please state your name and address and spell your last name.
Hi there. Yes, it's Susan Sauchelli, S.A.U.C.H.E.L.L.I., 9 Green Knolls Road. These are all questions. These are all questions towards the traffic study. Okay, so you've already said that you've lived in the area, and you already know, so that's good. I don't have to ask that question. And you feel confident that what was represented in the traffic study accurately depicts normal driving conditions and traffic volumes of the area surrounding the proposed Red Bulls complex?
Yes.
Okay. When was the date that you performed the field observations to determine which intersections would be included in the study?
Well, the, the locations that we selected were the same locations as were part of the original GDP.
When I read the traffic study, it said that you performed field observations of the intersections.
Yes, we conducted traffic counts on.
Field observations. Did you actually go and look at these intersections before you chose them for the study?
No, the, the locations were the same as the prior study.
Okay, so you did not. Oh, right. So you did not do that.
Not specifically. I mean, I know all of the intersections, having driven through pretty much every one of them in the, I won't say how long they've.
Okay, not a problem.
A long time.
All right. So the following set of questions are going to be in regards to the selection of Columbia Road and the West Service Drive as an intersection for the study. So since you did not do field observations, you did not know that the West Service Drive was in major just repair and not all, and not able at all to support traffic in either direction?
It's closed today, but we're adding traffic to it. The condition of the roadway today is irrelevant because it's going to be improved as part of this project.
No, it is not insignificant because you gave it LOS. You gave it, you put it into the analysis and makes your LOS look really, really good. Let me keep going. Since the service drive was gated shut in early January of 2022, and a post-study data reviewed that there was only one car that used this road, and yet you still assigned it AM, PM, peak and weekend values as part of the overall analysis. It makes the LOS look really great. Why did you do that?
We studied it for the proposed project and added the traffic to what was.
If you even look at your 2025 no build, there is still nothing going out of that road. You still have it as one or two, even on your no build.
In the no build condition, this site isn't occupied. The driveway still has no traffic on it because there's no activity on the site itself.
So why was this, why was that intersection chosen?
Because it's being used as access to this facility in the build condition. We're adding traffic to it. We're gonna use this as part of Red Bulls.
Yes, but during your study, since there's no cars on it, then your LOS is going to be A. And then you're going to keep it at A, even though once the complex opens, will not A not be there anymore because you're now gonna have people backing up at a traffic light trying to make a left or a right out of the service road onto Columbia.
Well, it's a signalized intersection. And if you look at table 3A.
Oh, I know it's a signalized. I live, my backyard is three properties down from it.
And our, our calculations using accepted capacity analysis software shows that the northbound, the service drive approach, the left turn operates at level of service C during the PMP hour. It is not all A.
All right. So okay, let me move on. The following set of questions in regards to the selection of Columbia Road and the neighborhood roads of Fillmore Drive and Loman Road as an intersection for the study. How can you describe this as a four-way intersection when the concrete island at Fillmore only allows existing traffic to go eastbound, thus never directly interacting with Columbia Road westbound and the primary entrance at Stockton Drive?
It's a four-legged intersection because you have Fillmore and you have Loman. You cannot make a left-hand turn out of that driveway. That was a condition of the prior site plan approval. But again, we chose that intersection because it was part of the study scope of the prior study, and we had decided as a team is that we're going to study the same exact intersections that were studied when this project came in eight years ago.
Then why was it chosen when Fillmore Drive does not have any direct connection to the Red Bulls property or the complex, and no Red Bulls employees, players, or general public should be accessing it? should be accessing it anyway?
Again, it's because it was studied.
I don't, it's not, it's not, you keep going back to a study that's not relevant right now. You're trying, you're taking a study, and you're finding intersections that are not, that do not need to be in the study.
That's your opinion. The county had a different opinion, and so did the township's traffic consultant. And the township, they asked us to study exactly the same intersections as were part of the prior study in case anybody wanted to compare the two studies. So that's what we did. I don't think it was necessary to do, but we chose to do everything that had been studied before because that's what was asked of us.
Okay. Following set of questions are in regards to the methodology of the study. Who determined the timeframes for monitoring and how long the study would be performed? Who determined, who figured out that it was going to be AM, PM, peak, and for how long?
That's pretty standard. We do that for all traffic studies. You study the morning from seven to nine.
Okay.
And the evening from four to six. The Saturday and Sunday were picked based upon the Red Bulls operations. We discussed all of that with the township professionals, and they agreed that those were appropriate timeframes.
All right. So in your expert opinion, is one day, two hours in the morning and two hours in the afternoon for AM, PM, peak, a total of only four hours of actual raw data sufficient to base an entire analysis of that time period, along with putting it into bill, no-build estimates?
Yes.
You think that's plenty? You think four hours? You think watching that intersection for one day was plenty of information?
Yes.
Why did you choose Tuesday to monitor the AM, PM, peak instead of the consecutive Monday?
We don't count on Mondays and Fridays because traffic patterns can be different. Typical weekdays are considered Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, as long as Monday wasn't a holiday, then we wouldn't count a Tuesday.
All right. So during this time of COVID, though, many people are opting for hybrid work weeks. Are not most people going to the office Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and staying home Tuesday, Thursday?
Not from my experience and, you know.
All right. So we already talked about who determined the intersections to monitor on the weekends. I mean, to monitor. Why, what is your rationale for not monitoring the same intersections from the AM, PM, peak data set for the weekend? Why did you only choose five intersections for the weekend when it's the busiest, but yet had 10 for that, four hours for that AM, PM, peak?
Because we focused our activities in our study on those intersections that serve the site. We weren't studying the off-site intersections because the volumes at Columbia and Park, Columbia and Normandy, those volumes are less on the weekends than they would be during the commuter hours when the intersections are the busiest.
Would it not have provided more of an equivalent comparison if you had the same 10, so people could look at it and see apples as apples instead of apples to oranges?
Well, I don't think comparing Saturday, Sunday to a weekday is comparable anyhow. I mean, there's different traffic patterns. And again, we discussed this with the township, and they agreed on the study scope.
So why were the two extremely congested intersections of Columbia Road and Normandy Parkway and Columbia Road and Park Avenue, both of which flank the primary entrance at Stockton, omitted from the weekend portion of the study when it was determined that the weekends would be the busiest?
The weekends would be the busiest as related to the Red Bulls.
Correct.
But the intersection activity, and actually, if you look at table two of our report, the highest traffic volumes occur on, during the PMP hour, not on a Saturday or a Sunday. And the traffic volumes at those off-site intersections would be lower on a Saturday and certainly on a Sunday than the PMP hour. That's why we didn't study those.
But according to.
Major off-site intersections.
Sorry. Okay. According to your zip codes, though, that's where everybody's going to be coming in. Off, they're going to be coming off of 287 to 124 to Normandy Parkway to Columbia. That is what's going to happen on every weekend, correct? According to your zip code data with the Academy people?
Sorry. According to the zip code data, the majority of the traffic is coming off of 24 and coming west on Columbia Road. A lesser amount is coming, I don't think they'll get off at Madison Avenue and then come up Normandy. I think they're going to come off on Morris Street, Morris Street to Columbia and make the right into the site. It's a much more direct route, more time on the highway, less time with.
With local traffic, all right. But still, Columbia was not being, you didn't monitor Columbia?
No, because it's through traffic, and it has very little impact when the main, the existing volumes are lower than what would occur during the PMP hour.
Okay. I think I've made my point, though, on that topic. Okay, then, on the weekend, why was a gated service drive and three unsignalized low-volume intersections on the backside of the complex, which should only be used for the Red Bulls players and delivery trucks, included in the weekend portion of the study? The public is not going to be going through those intersections at all. The Academy traffic, as you just told me, is coming up Columbia Turnpike. Sure, no, not a problem.
The majority, as I said, the majority of the traffic is on Columbia, which is why we studied the two main access points, Stockton and the Service Drive. We also looked at Fillmore and Loman just to make sure that there was no impact on the residents by the traffic from the Red Bulls coming by there. And then we did look at Old Turnpike, Con and Prescott for, you know, for the traffic, the local traffic that may go out that way. That's why we looked at that intersection as well as Prescott and Stockton, because not all of the traffic will utilize Columbia Road. The large majority of it does, but not all of it.
I thought, and from what I was gathering, the only place the public should be coming in, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, the only way the public should be coming in is through Stockton or through the West Service Drive. There should be nobody coming up through the backside of this complex. Is that correct?
No, that's not what I testified to.
I'm just asking. I mean, we've been hearing this all through, that the primary entrance for the public is Stockton Drive and Columbia Turnpike. Am I correct with that?
Yes, that is the primary access, but it is not the only access.
So then that means you're gonna, you're monitoring these back intersections because the public is going to come in off the backside and start cutting through Prescott and Stockton and Columbia Park?
No, they will come in on Prescott. They're, if they're low, local-based traffic, they will come in off of Madison Avenue to Prescott and then go to Stockton. And we do have our signage package directs people who are coming in that way to turn on the Stockton to go into the main parking lot. I never said all of the traffic would come in off of Columbia Road.
Well, that's what we've been told this whole time, and I think Columbia Park would like to know if now all of a sudden you're thinking that you're monitoring this back roads because now you're thinking that some of the Red Bulls general public is going to be coming in that way.
Some of the Academy players and some of the employees live in areas where the direct route is to come in off of Madison Avenue.
That's correct, but that's not the, that's not the Academy traffic. That's not the weekend traffic. The weekend traffic is the Academy traffic that these people are going to be going in and out for Saturday and Sunday, and it's the public, it's the general Academy traffic. And that traffic by your zip codes are coming up Columbia. But yet you're monitoring, you're not monitoring Columbia. Did you know, you monitor, why did you monitor the back? Nobody should be coming in there.
We, we, we look, we study.
I think I made my point. I think I made my point.
That's, I'm trying to answer your question, but that's fine.
Do you feel, okay, who, who chose February 5, 6, and 8 as the testing dates? Why did you choose the middle of winter to monitor and do your traffic study?
That's when we started the process. That's when we started developing the plans and preparing the traffic report.
Do you feel that optimal driving conditions were represented on the weekend of February 5 and 6, when on February 4, there was a winter weather revisory out for a tenth of an inch of freezing rain, and neither Saturday or Sunday got above 27 degrees?
The traffic conditions on the date that we did the counts were clear, and the roads were, there were no issues with the roads.
And you know that because you were there? I can tell you, our backyard is on Columbia Turnpike, so you can't go anywhere with this, okay?
I'm, I don't recall specifically, but the count company, you know, that we use all the time, they don't do counts when the weather is inappropriate. You know, the counts are done by video cameras. You know, it's not people sitting out on the street corner anymore. And it would be clear from the video whether there were roadway conditions that were not appropriate.
Okay, so it's cold and it's less than 32 degrees.
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
Never mind, okay, I'm fine. You're right, I am going long. I'm going long because there's a bunch of holes in the study, and I'm trying to show you that this study is not what you think it is. All right? And I will stop there. The last thing I will just make a point of is that how can you describe the study as having extensive data?
Saucelli, do you want me to swear you in so you can make the point?
Nope, I'm just going to keep asking one more question, and I'm done.
Okay.
I'm done. This is a quantitative study. And how can you describe the study as having extensive data when only 18 hours of it was actual data, and the rest was a trip generation book and zip codes and a computer simulation? It does not show, how does, has a trip generate, let me do it this way. How does the information out of a trip generation book accurately describe two of the most dangerous intersections in Morris County?
Our study follows accepted industry standards for the preparation of traffic studies. It was reviewed by Mr. Fissinger, and it was reviewed by the county, so.
Well, I think I brought up enough points and enough Swiss cheese holes in my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, just.
For me?
No, no, no.
Okay. Because I'm, I'll answer anything you want.
Mr. Keller, is there a declaration of restrictions filed with respect to this property?
Yes.
And what is the purpose of that declaration, for common use of the roads?
Correct, among other things.
And what was contemplated in terms of the development of the site when that declaration was recorded?
That Prescott and Stockton would be available for use for everybody within Columbia Park.
And what was the development contemplated at the time?
At the time that was filed, was for 900,000 square feet of office space on the track that the Red Bulls are taking.
And just in rough numbers, what is, what is the general trip generation of 900,000 square feet? Well, let me back up. If this document was recorded, then every owner who buys in the homeowners association would take subject to this document. Is that correct?
I would presume so, yes. You're the lawyer, I'm only an engineer.
The answer is yes. And so what is the trip generation contemplated or expected from a 900,000-square-foot office lab building?
During the AM and PM peak hours, it's over 1,000 trips in each hour, whereas the proposed development will generate 158 or 328 on the PM. And for the Saturday, it's 423 versus R287, and on a Sunday, 180 versus R143.
So in all cases, less is and sometimes significantly less.
That is, that is correct.
And who owns Stockton? Who owns that property?
That is on the property, well, currently, I guess it's owned by Vision Equities, who is still the property owner of that lot. It will become a part of the Red Bulls when they close on this property. It will be on their lot.
And did they contribute, did the owners of these properties contribute to the, to the construction and the signalization and all the traffic improvements associated with the roads that we see and the?
Yes.
Okay. No further questions.
Next name and address, please.
Yes, hi. My name's Alfred Demiro, 2 Aldrich Court. These are going to be public comments, so if I have to be sworn in.
You don't have to be, but if you want it to constitute testimony, I'm happy to swear you in.
Swear me in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Again, Mr., your address again?
2 Aldrich Court.
Thank you.
Which, I think, you know, we directly face Stockton, the front of our home, and Building A and major part of the development. Before I start, I just want to thank Ms. Wilson for pointing out how long somebody can sit at the intersection of Con and Madison. It's crazy. Thank you. And with apologies, I'm mainly going to be reading my comments. "The sum and substance of my comment is that the community needs this planning board to take positive steps to protect our quality of life and home values." Excuse me. "When the Red Bulls project was initially presented nearly a year ago, we were told that Morris Township would be their new quote 'home' end quote, with the executives and employees coming to the main building. There was an element of community pride in the announcement and also community benefit as these employees would enhance the local economy in myriad ways. Remember that the proposed size of the main building accommodated those executives and employees, with the entire third floor dedicated to their occupancy. This was confirmed by Kristen Byrd, the architect's sworn testimony. After the township approved the Red Bull zoning request in its entirety, we learned that the Red Bulls are no longer moving the 100 executives and employees to Morris Township. They will remain in Harrison. In my view, that diminishes the prestige of the project and the financial benefit to the local businesses and restaurants. The architect, Ms. Byrd, confirmed she was never asked to prepare a redesign eliminating the third floor of Building A, despite the Red Bulls' decision to leave the Harris, in Harrison, the executives for whom the entire floor was dedicated. To me, this is now a project of diminished prestige for our community and more, is more like the Hanover Training Facility on steroids. Please question why the Red Bulls now deserve such a large main building after they altered the entire feel of the project by leaving the headquarters in Harrison. I encourage this board to ask the Red Bulls to reduce the height and expanse of that building A. Many of us have voiced concerns about the separate Phase II dorm building, and now the Red Bulls propose using the third floor of the main building for additional dormitory space in lieu of executive offices, as well as some collateral uses. While Mr. Ameruso did not call it dorm space. While Mr. Amoruso did not call it dorm space, and that was his testimony of October 3rd, he used euphemisms like reconstitution, rejuvenation, or regeneration. It sounded like a dormitory. And the Red Bulls engineering experts, in fact, Mr. Keller, specifically referred to the vacated spaces dormitory space for the first team in his July 22 memorandum, while he referenced occasional co-working space. I would respectfully submit that this is an attempt to keep the construction of the third floor on the table. This change of use to the professional dormitory space, to me, is tone deaf in terms of the community concerns. Whereas we had concerns about the dormitory building, we're now getting more dormitory, dormitory space. The Red Bulls no longer need or deserve such a massive building, considering the decision to leave the front office in Harrison. I ask that this board encourage the Red Bulls to reduce the size and height of the headquarters building. In light of the foregoing, it's apparent that the residences at Columbia Park need this board's help and protection. I submit that this project is somewhat unique in the Major League Soccer world due to the placing of a huge, what I would call the headquarters building, though it's no longer the headquarters, Building A, literally a stone's throw from housing. We are ground up in the middle of what Mr. Amoruso called an arms race, that's his term, with the other Major League Soccer teams. Many of the Major League Soccer teams have constructed recent facilities, and they are not as massive as this complex. You can look at MLSsoccer.com to confirm that. Without this board's clear protections and dictates, our home values and quality of life will be severely impaired. Please document and hold the Red Bulls to each and every stipulation. Among those stipulations were no facade lighting of the main building, and there were stipulations concerning planting. Please set stringent requirements for the adequacy and beauty of the screening and fencing for 12 months of the year. Please ensure that full screening is not years away, but coincides with the start of construction. Please keep in mind that Engineer Harrington testified that there was no engineering reason why the start of construction and the start of Birmingham and screening could not coincide. In fact, he admitted that Birmingham and screening could precede construction. Please protect our amazing sunsets. I refer to that. While there's going to be evergreens that are planted that will grow tall, the landscape architect testified.
Five minutes.
I'm almost done.
Okay.
Testified that they can top those trees. Please ensure that the daytime and nighttime use of the fields is limited to the description from Mr. Amoruso, and please require the lighting to be off by nine o'clock, consistent with the Environmental Commission, and that not all fields be lighted simultaneously. Finally, please ensure that the residents have a means to communicate to township and the Red Bulls during the pendency of the project and the, and in the years following. The Red Bulls stipulated and committed to maintaining plantings and screening beyond the point of their contractor's warranty in response to the mayor's inquiry. Please ensure that we have clear contact information so that that commitment and other commitments, if they fall short, we know who to contact, who to complain to, and how to get redressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, name and address, please. Spell your last name.
David White, 10 Delano Court, W H I T E. Just by way of prefacing this, I.
Do you want me to swear you in?
If you prefer, sure.
But it's your call.
Well, I'm going to start by just talking about my past experience in this industry, so if you'd like.
Let me swear you in, so you have the benefit of it being testimony. Do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please proceed.
Excuse me. For 20 years, I owned and operated a sports recreation facility in Millburn, and the reason I bring that up is because I, I've sat here for a number of meetings, and this is the really, this is where the important stuff to me really exists, because the first rule of running a facility like this is, I am sorry to sound so tongue-in-cheek, is make sure nobody dies. That's the first rule, all right? And the thing that most concerns me is, is traffic and traffic issues. So I want to ask Mr. Keller questions for clarity, which is, can you please explain the concept of traffic calming measures?
Purpose of traffic calm? Sure everybody can hear me. The purpose of traffic calming measures is to control speeds and to keep the function of roadways for the intended purpose. AKA, you know, you don't want roads to be cut through.
Okay, and I'm not, I'm gonna ask a follow-up question. I don't mean this to be adversarial, I'm just asking for clarity. Which is, in layman's terms, what you really want to do is you want to slow traffic down to, to reduce the possibility of accidents. There are going to be accidents. If there are cars on the road and pedestrians and people, regardless of whether it's the Red Bull facility someplace else, cars get in accidents. So if cars are going slower and, you know, they're, they're forced to be more calm, the, the logic would suggest then there would be less potential for accidents. Would you agree with that?
Not necessarily that there's less accidents, the severity of the accident would be reduced by controlling speeds.
Okay, going back to rule number one, hopefully nobody dies, you know, hit by a car.
Right.
And before I forget, I want to point out to Ms. Wilson's point. Farther down the traction line, there is a railroad crossing, crossing with gates at the College of St. Elizabeth's that does have stop signs going across the railroad track. So there, that, that precedent exists. Down, and I rode my bike right past it today, but I just wanted to get that before I forgot. My biggest concern with regard to the traffic right now is the, the somewhat nebulous question as to enforcement on those roads. And right now, there is no Article 39, my understanding, or Title 39, excuse me, and there is some question as to whether or not the township is, will take on that responsibility. So if that's the case, what happens if somebody blows through a stop sign? What happens if somebody speeds? What happens if somebody parks on Preston or Stockton and, you know, which is, you know, impacts us as, as the people in Columbia Park to stop that and to enforce that? So I don't know if this is necessarily for Mr. Keller, but it's something I wanted to put on record for the committee or the board to, to further examine. How, how are we going to monitor that? We can't be outside saying, hey, you can't park there. So we, we need, we need some, some assurances there. The other issue is with regard to what is now Madison to Park by way of Prescott. That is a straight shot. And you can get, I go 30 miles an hour on my bike going down, because I weigh so much, so the gravity takes over. But in, in my opinion, I believe that there should be three-way stops at literally every one of those intersections. It's a bit of a pain in the rear end, but so what? So you can't get up to 30 or 40 miles an hour. You go 20, you go another couple hundred yards, you stop, and you go like this. And that is a traffic calming measure that I would like to be considered. The other, the other issue, you know, that we talked about the centerlines, I think that's very, that's, that's great. It's a great thing because people do drift, and that'll hopefully visually will keep people from drifting on that, on that sidewalk. The other question that I have before I, I, I get out of here is thinking specifically about a sign. So if I'm leaving the parking lot from the Red Bulls facility and I get to Stockton, I live to the right. I live up on, on Delano Court where Aldrich and Ohika is. I live to the right. I'd really rather not people turn that way. I know it's impossible, but I'd really rather not they turn that way. Is that sign going to say, for example, Madison? So that somebody would then turn right, go up Stockton, make a left on Prescott, go down past Addy to, 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 to park and make that right turn? Or are they going, I mean, you can't stop somebody unless there's a physical barrier. Are they going to be gently encouraged to exit out of the other, the other driveway?
The signage package does not direct anybody to go towards Prescott out of the main parking lot. It, it's, the sign directs people to Columbia Road, to Route 24, 287 and 80, and to Morris Town of Florham Park. And, and from our zip code study, that is over 90% of where the traffic wants to go. So we're not giving anybody direction to go to Prescott if they are that 4% or 5% that's local. You don't have to tell them if they're local how to get back home, because they're gonna know how to get back home.
Well.
So, but we're trying to, with our design, direct people out to Columbia. That's where we want them to go.
Right. And, and I would appreciate if that was codified so that the signs, so we don't come back later and find out that the signs perhaps say turn to the right. But the other thing is, when people go to the left, and they do it three or four or five times, and they have to wait at that light for an extended period of time, they're gonna go, you know, there's gotta be a better way to do this. And they're gonna turn right, and they're gonna go this way, they're gonna go that way. It's just human nature. It's what's going to happen. So whatever, you know, we can do to try to, to mitigate the amount of traffic in the neighborhood goes back again to the point of trying to calm traffic and have people not potentially get hurt. The other thing that I think it needs to be considered is there's still very much an open-ended series of questions as it relates to what's gonna happen with the Park Avenue and Columbia Turnpike and Columbia Road intersection over time. At the bottom of Prescott now, we have, in the Hanover Township, there's going to be a affordable housing putting down there that's all gonna add to traffic. When you come down Park, there's supposed to be a no turn, no left turn sign that's about that big, which is now lying on the ground on Park because somebody knocked it over, but it doesn't matter because people make that left turn anyway. And I realize this is not the purview of the planning board, it's a county issue, but there needs to be a barrier erected, a small curb or island of some sort that does not allow people to make a left turn from Park onto Stockton, or Prescott, excuse me, and go straight through the development to cut through. That's a very, very simple fix to keep people out of the neighborhood. And I'll sum up by saying, my grandmother had an expression which was, you know, it's the chicken soup theory. The chicken soup theory is very simple, which is if you're sick, you take chicken soup simply for the fact that it couldn't hurt. So measures like stop signs and measures like no left turn or stuff like that are very, very simple things that potentially accomplish a lot, but there's no downside to them. So I'd really like, whether it's the Red Bulls, the planning board, the county, whoever, to really look at those fairly simple things to hopefully keep people safe, whether they're residents or visitors or what have you. And I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next. Name and address and spell your last name, please.
Yes, my name is Vincent O'Connor, and I live at 3 Aldrich Court. And I really don't need to be sworn in because my comments are going to be brief. A year ago, I'm sorry.
If, if you want it to be evidence, I'll swear you in.
It doesn't, oh, yeah. It's not necessary that it be evidence, but if you wish.
No, no, it's your, it's up to you. I'm happy to swear you in if you wish it to have the way of evidence before this board.
Okay, then be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please proceed.
A year ago this month, many of us here today attended the presentation by the Red Bulls of their plan to construct a state-of-the-art soccer facility here in Morris Township. That meeting, that night, I was struck by the Red Bulls' commitment to minimize the impact this development would have on the existing residential community wherever possible. Your announcement tonight to remove Field Nine from the developmental plan clearly indicates your commitment to mitigating this impact on the community wherever possible. I thank you for removing Field Nine, and I encourage you to work with people like Mr. Demiro and work to reduce the magnitude where possible and the impact on our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. I have a few questions.
Name and address?
I'm sorry. Patricia Collins for Green Knolls Road. I have a few questions first, and then I have a comment, but I can do that later. My question is, again, on the, on all the lighting that you showed on the slide, could you bring that slide up again, of all the lighting? Yes, thank you, thank you. Okay.
Just for the record, this was. A24.
Okay. Now, you did a wonderful job, and I thank you for all the work you put into it. But in terms of the laypeople, this showed us nothing but circles, so. I'm getting agreement here. So would you be kind enough to show us, number one, what the 15-foot light is going to, is it going to look like a regular street light? Is it gonna look like a fire hydrant? Is it gonna, would you be good enough to show us that? And?
By the way, it's not only laypeople, even professionals, it looks like.
Good to hear.
We're just gonna pull up the, the site plan sheet that's in the set to show what the, the fixture is.
Is that a detail?
It's a, yeah.
And it would be nice to have a rendering, because we'd like to see if we're in our bedroom on the second floor, what we're going to see. You know, the foliage is leaving us now, and we're going to be looking right into the field.
What's this, the second here?
That's okay.
Those are field lights. So the.
Which one is it?
In the upper right-hand corner is a single light, and then diagonally to the left is a double fixture. So it's a very thin fixture. It's relatively flat with a little bit of relief on top. It's the joy of LED lighting is that they are much more low-profile than the old-style fixtures where it was a big box.
And did you say that there's going to be 33 of them, plus four, plus 12?
There's 33 in the main parking lot, which is.
Right.
The, the one that is closer to the Green Knolls neighborhood than the other, the other two lots.
Is that 33 poles or 33 fixtures?
33, no, fixtures. It's 33 fixtures. Don't ask me how many twin fixtures there are. There aren't a lot, because those are in the parking lot. Most of the poles, most of the fixtures are single fixtures.
And that is sheet?
Right.
Okay.
I'm sorry, ma'am, go ahead.
Oh, no, that's okay. I, um, and I realize that they'll be 15 feet. Originally, they said that there would be 172 lights. The 12 were eliminated last week. They were the field lights, and this is only 50. Are the rest foot candles? And what does a foot candle look like? And how high is it?
The, the 172 lights are the number of individual fixtures on the sports lighting, which Mr. Zeller testified to. That has nothing to do with the parking lot lights. Foot candles is a measure of illumination, and it's the illumination at the ground level.
Okay, I misunderstood. And that 172, though, as was explained, we won't be seeing any of that.
Correct. That's, that's what Mr. Zeller testified to about the sports lighting.
Not your purview. I appreciate that. And one other question, and regarding this FAA, I feel as though that was sprung on us tonight, because all of a sudden we got one paragraph. It was approved, but it was just in one paragraph. It was like glossed over, so we could really use some information. Number one, like the number of lights that will have, and what will have red lights on them? What will have white lights on them? The time, I know you said that, but it was very fast in the paragraph. And is there a, is there something on the website that?
The town has, the town has the approval, and they have, we submitted to the township, which you can get from the township, both the approval, which I think is like 80-something pages, is that right?
I, I heard you say that.
But, so you didn't have to go through that if you didn't want to go through it. We're not saying don't go through it, but we also had a little cheat sheet, which, which attached to it talks about what the requirements are, and attached to it shows the locations of each red light.
But that wasn't made public, was it?
It's public because the township has it. You can get it from the township.
I can give you some background on that, because I did a little further, you know, research. I can give you some background on that because I did a little further, you know, research in particular to compare what was on the temporary pole at the at the Honeywell site because that proved to be problematic to the neighbors.
Very problematic, yes.
The the approval from the FAA on that required a dual system, which required a red light for the evenings and a white strobe for the day. And, you know, researching that further, my understanding from the complaints is that that white strobe was going off at night and it was not supposed to be. You know, I seem to recall some of the neighbors complaining that, you know, I've got the strobe light that's going off, you know, all night long. And, you know, from my research, it should have only been the red light at night and the the strobe for the daytime navigation at the airport. The the eighty pages that were submitted, there was basically an application that was submitted to the FAA for all the buildings. All the buildings came back not needing lights and it's only the the six light poles for the fields, basically at the corners and at the midpoints that require the red lights and and the red light, it's 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 on in the evenings, but they were not required to do the dual system that has that strobe. So it's much better than what was on that earlier temporary pole on the Honeywell site. So no lights on any of the buildings, only on the six corners, four corners of the fields that are being lighted and and two on the midpoints. So total of six red lights.
There's six red lights and what hours will that be on at night? What, how you define night? Is it dusk? Is it?
Dusk till dawn.
And the other one is dawn till dusk, the white?
Well, there's no white, but it was supposed to be on the temporary tower, you know, during the daylight, the strobe.
Okay. And now at what height was that light needed? Because obviously they're not needed on buildings and such, so it's needed on these lights, these six lights, because they're X number of feet tall. At which, at which height would there be no need for the red lights?
Well, they they had to apply for the FAA, you know, for even like a maintenance building that's one story high. It started from there and went up.
And I realize that.
Eighty and ninety foot light poles.
But but it it sounds like it it wasn't needed for a building. And but it's needed for the pole. So I'm just wondering at what point is a light needed?
That's a question for the FAA.
That wasn't asked because if it, if it was from our point of view, we don't want to be looking at red lights at night.
To give you an idea, the indoor field, I believe the height of that building is sixty-five feet. It was not required on that building.
It was not required, sixty-five feet. So how tall are those lights again?
Eighty and ninety.
Eighty and ninety. Why don't, aren't they lowered than to sixty-five feet?
Jim, can I, can I, I think there's a misunderstanding here. And I think Mr. Barrington spoke to the FAA. No matter what you develop there, you are going to need lights, no matter how high, because they say just the topography of the land will require a light. They even said, and tell me if I'm wrong, that the townhouses may should have had lights on them. So the the reason they're on the poles is that the poles just happen to be the highest structure on this development. But even if the poles weren't there, there'd be lights because even a building, no matter how high, would need lights. The townhouses should have lights on them.
But it was just said that a sixty-five foot building does not need a light.
It doesn't need a light because the poles are higher.
Well, is, isn't it logical to love the poles? Not gone.
If the poles, let me finish. If the poles were gone, you would need the lights on the buildings. Whatever the highest structure is, is where you would have the light, but no matter what you develop there, you would need lights.
Oh, I see. So.
It would just go on the highest structure.
If the highest structure was ten feet, you'd still.
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't understand this either.
I appreciate the clarification.
I didn't understand the FAA.
So I'm not.
I'd like to remind you that the board has no jurisdiction on that. And I think we had a good outcome, you know, from the FAA that they, those strobes are not required.
That's great. No, and I appreciate the input, but and I'm sure you can understand as a layperson and a resident, these questions are very vague, some of them, and I appreciate that clarification. Okay. And I have a couple of comments, but a little of the group ahead of me in comments. I'll be back. Thank you very much.
You can go ahead and do the comments now.
Really?
Ms. Collins.
What, if you don't mind, can you raise your right hand?
Oh, certainly.
Do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you very much. Okay. Following up on something that Mayor Giuffi said about the lights on, he was questioning the timing, midnight. Midnight is much too late. And I'd like to read what Mark Grandpere said, and I'm quoting him. He confirmed that only two fields are matches, blah, blah, blah. I'm getting to, normally the last session ends at four PM, but there are occasions when a match or a training session are at seven PM. So as residents, both in the condos and Green Knolls and Featherly, ten o'clock is too late. Midnight is certainly too late. And he's saying once in a while it'll be seven PM. So what we initially heard from the Red Bulls versus what has been put in now is very distressing. So if we could lower, if I'm going to have the board lower the time of closing, they want ten o'clock, how about, and this says seven, how about in the middle, eight thirty? Consider that, please, because it's a quality of life issue for us. And, you know, one other thing also thrown in there was a basketball court. And I hope that's going to be eliminated because it's right on our cul-de-sac. We'll be hearing that all night. And if if the board would be good enough to take that out, we don't, we don't need it. Why do they need a basketball court? It's a soccer field. But well, thank you for now. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Yes, Rich Tangle, sixteen Featherly Road. And I have questions and then I can make a statement or come back for that, whatever the board desires. Regarding the traffic, Mr. Keller. So with regard to the trips, what is the percent increase in traffic on the weekends?
Increase in traffic compared to what?
Compared to the residential development now. So the count you took and so forth. So what is the difference increase in traffic on the weekends with all the activity at Red Bulls?
I, we didn't.
What percent increase?
We didn't calculate or separately measure the residential traffic, so I couldn't tell you what the incremental changes compared to the residential traffic.
Wouldn't, wouldn't you say that's an important part of deliberation or determination of impact of a development, though, to?
No, what's important is can the intersection serving the site handle the traffic that's generated by the project? And that we have shown it can.
Well, from a resident in the area, they're concerned about increase and impact. So you don't have that answer.
No.
What is the increase or impact? Okay.
Well, I don't have the increase. I have the impact because that's what our study showed. And our study showed that there were no impacts from the traffic associated with this proposed facility.
Well, Eric, just as an important clarification, you have counts not specific to the residential. You have general counts as to what's on site right now in no build condition, correct?
Yes.
So I think what Rich is asking is the no build versus build. What's the increase?
On the weekends. And also off, I'll say off business hours. So if there was an office there, people had gone by six o'clock. So after six o'clock, weekdays and what on weekends, Saturday and Sunday, what's the increase in traffic? Number of cars, say, people will see. Percent increase.
First off, let me deal with that. Last question or last comment first is just because it's office does not mean that there is no activity on the weekend. This was originally planned for an office research lab facility, which would have as based on, as can, as indicated in our table, too, is that there would be traffic on the weekends. And that traffic from that office complex would have been greater than the traffic from the Red Bulls facility.
May I ask where you get that information from?
We get it from the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, eleventh edition.
Okay, maybe I'll get sworn and as an engineer, I'll say that's incorrect. Are you familiar with the Honeywell property that was there, the office buildings?
Yeah, I remember when it was allied signal.
Okay. And do you recall?
I'm old, I know.
Do you recall what the traffic was on weekends or after work hours there?
Not specifically, no. I, I, I can't say that I recall what what level of activity was there.
Close to zero in that regard, so. Okay. So do you have an answer on the percent increase or no?
To give you a percentage, no, I can't do that, but I will tell you that the figures in our report have the no build traffic on Saturday and Sunday along Stockton. And 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 that's in figure three B. And the figure five C has our site generated traffic. You know, today, you know, because Stockton is going to be the main point of access to to the Red Bulls facility because that's what we're, we want to get people out to Columbia Road. So that intersection or that approach of Stockton is going to see a fairly significant increase percentage wise over what's there today because very few people use Stockton going towards Columbia Turnpike or, I'm sorry, Columbia Road. But it's less than what it would have been if it was the office complex. I don't have a percentage. I can't.
But you don't have a percentage. Okay.
No.
Okay. With regard to the turning lefts and right lanes, are there, there will or will not be any increase in lanes to turn left or right? Out of the complex, is that correct?
The lane usage that's there today, which was designed for the office complex as well as the residential, we're not changing.
Okay. And I believe you mentioned that the site is the destination, but origin of a trip is going to come, people are going to come from the east and the west to get to this location. Is that correct?
We based our assignment on the ZIP code of employees and of the academy. So yes, they're coming from all directions.
And as was referenced, even a board member brought it up, and I believe a resident, a neighbor of mine, that that there's some intersections and they rank on the county list as some dangerous intersections, I'll say. Columbia and Normandy and Park and Columbia and so forth. And then also by the the railroad can be quite an issue at times. With regard to your traffic observations, did you observe the traffic and the way maneuvers are conducted at those intersections? And I'll say particularly Normandy and Columbia. Did you have engineers out there or you you put a camera up or what? How did you observe the traffic flow in the area?
The, we collected traffic volume data at all of the intersections and that was done by video camera.
Would you agree that people that aren't familiar with an area, when they come into an area, that they get lost or when they approach an intersection, they quite don't know how to maneuver around it? Would you say that happens in your experience?
I, I mean, you know, people who are unfamiliar with roadways, yes, they could be traveling slower. You know, I mean, that's certainly possible, but I mean, you know, for the majority of it.
So. So how many trips, additional trips you feel be generated from outside the area coming to this destination roughly?
Well, most of the academy and and the employee trips are generated from outside of this immediate area. How many are outside of Morris County? I, I don't know. I didn't look at it that way. I used the ZIP code data to figure out how people are going to get to the site.
So would you say, though, or or agree that that would certainly increase the probability of a traffic accident or impact or to an area? It would not increase it.
No.
People unknown to the area going through dangerous intersections for, that will not increase the incidence of accidents in your opinion?
It's your, your representation that they're dangerous intersections. There's, there's nothing in any of the documents, you know, about that. But adding vehicles to an intersection does not necessarily increase the accident potential of that intersection. The accident potential is based on whatever geometry or traffic flow, not traffic flow itself, traffic movements at that intersection.
Okay. And I don't know, I have a statement to make, but I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but regarding that. So could I make it now or question? No.
You can make comments now.
Okay, just, no, I I observe that intersection.
If you raise your right hand and I swear you in, it'll count. Do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do swear to God. Yes, with regard to, and maybe just so you could look at your study again. With regard to Columbia and Normandy, I'll say that's a very dangerous intersection. Almost daily, I'm at that intersection. And I see so many illegal or improper maneuvers because that's a poorly designed intersection. There's an aisle in there and people don't know where to go, heading west, going out to Normandy and so forth. And it affects people coming west on Columbia, say, going to this facility. It's just a very dangerous intersection. I, I just think it's going to, you're going to contribute to the potential of accidents and hazards to that. And you didn't look at it, which surprises me. And and along with other issues there. So, okay. With regard to the FAA lighting, I just want to clarify. So I heard, I believe from council, it's steady burn lights. And there's going to be on top of the poles, I believe, if I heard the engineer correct, red lighting, steady burn. Okay. But they'll be visible from the ground, obviously, or certainly from second story of a of a condo. Okay, I, I didn't hear of any shielding or with regard to any shielding from the ground, but I know typically you can see an FAA light from the ground. So, okay. Okay, I just have some statements to make if I have the time.
Please.
Okay. So overall, I've been here to most of the hearings and certainly on the sales pitches that were made at the Weston and so forth a while back. And I guess my one question, which I think to myself, how did this happen? With regard to between an older residential development and new residential development, much higher priced homes and this site was an office site, Honeywell. And quiet on the weekends, quiet after the people went home after six o'clock. I've been here over thirty years, almost forty years. And I just feel this is such an inappropriate use for this location, but it's coming. So again, poor planning, poor decision making, but it's here. And I just have to characterize my feelings on just a continuation of the degradation of the neighborhood. The storage facility went in there on a residential lot. And it was a residential lot because if you look at the tax map, I know there's some dispute or argument over that. It's sequentially in the numbering of all the tax lots there. And it was lot number thirteen. Here it is, a storage facility ends up on that lot. How that happened, I was asleep as a resident, I guess, too. There's a cell tower coming or hopefully not, but that's up in the air, too. We have the sports complex now. So what's next? You know, what can happen here? And with regard to master planning, and I know this is a county issue because New Jersey has so many municipalities. I'm a professional planner, too, still active licensed. And master planning is a joke in New Jersey, my opinion. There's no master planning. It's check a box, the state requires it, boom, it's done. But no planning here for having a facility like this within residential complexes. Some say, oh, an office building or we could have had a warehouse there. I doubt that. And again, office building hours, Monday to Friday, quiet after six, no weekend activity. I say. I say no comparison, you could even argue better ratable too. With regard to impacts, and I'll call them severe, basically, this is an active site, seven days a week, essentially all year, year-round. Apparently, no limits on the schedule, I know the schedule was put up by a representative of Red Bull. This was just a sample and I don't see any restrictions on the schedule. Looks like they could do whatever they want, whenever they want, unless the board puts some restrictions on that schedule. So we have that severe impact. Activity starts early in the morning, ends late in the evening, took on the weekends, during the weekday. That, that just is terrible. And plus, people have to leave, yes, so there'll be activity there constantly. Lighting, the, there's a, great that there isn't a dual lighting system, strobe and red, that would have been terrible and I hope the cell tower doesn't come and have that. But again, 20 million some lumens of lighting on the field and we're told by an expert, we're not gonna see it. You know, that's just ridiculous, but, and I have a photo, I took a photo. I volunteer at the food pantry up at Central Park and it's nighttime now when we're distributing food to the clients. And I could show it to the board, but they have fields up there and this is about 800 feet away. Our residents here are 100, less than half that. And it had rained and a little moisture in the air and that would happen on a fog or a little drizzle, but I don't know if you could see from there, but look at that glow. This is like a glow, a skylight glow, and that's what we're gonna see. I don't care what any expert says, that's what you're gonna see. And plus, I heard the fan noise and shouting and yelling and whistles, everything. And this is 800, almost 1,000 feet away, now we're talking just a few hundred here. So I didn't believe the experts there. The PA system, who knows, whistles, who knows? And all the other stuff, mowers, deliveries, maintenance, garbage collection. And then also the dorm, which is gonna be like a hotel. You know, that's problematic, I'll say, with regard to the activity that goes on there. And that'll be like a wall of light for the nearby residents, you'll see all this patchwork of lights for the rooms that are there. And now I just want to hit on each expert, bear with me.
I'm sorry, Mr. Tangle, could you wrap it up, it's more than five minutes.
Okay, site environmental, there were some environmental concerns here. Some due diligence was mentioned by the set engineer, but apparently the Honeywell LSRP was never contacted. So I don't think that's due diligence on the county expert. Noise, what will we hear, heard nothing about that. Meeting guidelines and all that, that means nothing, decibel levels, what will we hear? No expert testimony on that. Inappropriate use that a planner would have said, the renderings believe misleading, not actually from visual viewpoint. You know, on the sidewalk is one thing, when you're in your house, what are you gonna see at night with all the activity going on in the fields, that wasn't presented. The architect, I feel misleading testimony there. She cited a similar facility she did when I asked about her experience in California. But she left out one significant caveat, there was no lighting on that facility. So yeah, the residents are happy, she said and all that, oh, we're getting this activity. But no lighting on 90, 80-foot poles, you know, big, big difference there. So I felt her testimony was misleading and so forth. And the landscaper trying to impress the board that you're gonna have growth of one to three feet a year on all the vegetation they're planting, you know, that's ridiculous too, to hear that. That's like, oh, everything will be covered up in a few years, you know, maybe like 20, 30 years, maybe that will happen. So anyhow, I just was dismayed by what I heard with regard to that, and a little bit longer. I did appreciate that you brought, you mentioned what disdain, I'll say, was showed to the public, because again, we don't, you know, you question, you comment and we don't like being told that's illegal or it's not proper, but you bear with us on that. Let me just cite something personal here. I was before varying zoning boards and so forth over my many years in the township, I love the township. And one time I was before the zoning board and my kids were this tall, now they're taller than me. But I put a little sunroom on, two-car garage, because the homes in the area just had the small one car. I watched with a pool in and I was denied the swimming pool. And the board member specifically, I'll never forget, said, Mr. Tangle, this is too busy, you know. So that hurt, I was, my boys didn't like it when I told them no pool. And other residents had pools too, and so anyhow, that was too busy. So I'd like to just sum up and say, all this is too busy. So maybe a no is appropriate for some of the development that's planned here. And just wanted you to take that into account. So thank you for your time and appreciate listening. Bye.
Margaret De Souza, Three Green Knolls Road. I just have a few questions, because as mentioned before, about the FAA supplying the lighting information. Can you tell me when was this information provided? On the, through the board?
I think it came in last week.
I can tell you.
What date?
We, we sent it in like a day or two, because we wanted to do that cheat sheet. So we reviewed it, they did something pages, but I think two days after we received it, we.
What date was that though?
I don't know, do you know, Ophane? I see that last week, hold on, I can find that, go ahead, ask your next question, I'll find that.
Okay, so yeah, so I wanted to know when, because also I wanted to know was, so when was it, it was available to the public at that time, correct? So we just, I just kind of.
When you say November 2nd.
Okay, so November 2nd, so basically what, five days ago was provided, okay. And I don't believe, well, I won't comment, but my question is, is that how would we have known that that information was available? Should we be like looking every day on the information to see what's being provided? It would, is it possible to have a picture of what those, the FAA is suggesting that has to be done? Because you're saying 90-foot lights, correct? And then on top of that, how far are the lights going up from that 90 feet also?
It's right on top, there's, I'd say maybe 12, 18 and 15 fixtures.
Okay, so not that much.
And there's a picture in the approval.
Okay, yeah, but we don't have that tonight and it would have been nice to have that provided.
I know, we would have wanted the FAA approval months ago, but we didn't get it.
Yeah, so, but my question is, is you're looking for approval tonight by the board, right? And that was a really a major concern by the public, especially the people, the residents living in this area. So it would have been, you know, a good idea to have that information provided. Okay, and getting to the traffic, I know it was cited on what, you know, how much traffic there would be, but basically tonight, all that's been talked about is just the employees who would be there and maybe the parents dropping the children off or whoever is staying there. But also there are matches, right? And then there might be other events like wedding events and things like that. So I don't know if that was taken into consideration as far as the traffic goes.
We studied the, all of the activities and operations associated with the Red Bulls training complex, everything. Employees, academy practices, academy games, all of that was included in our study.
Okay. Now how much, as far as, how much square footage would we be looking at as far as like light signage goes? As far as like lighting on the, on the whole area?
You're talking about lighting of the signs?
Yes.
The only two sign, well, the two project signs, one at the service drive, one at Stockton, the lights will be illuminated, not the background. And then the Bulls.
Recession.
The Bulls that are up by the viewing area will be ground lit from below.
Sponsorship on the field, on the indoor building.
And then the.
Halo lighting around the letters.
Can you bring up that?
None of the directional signs are illuminated. And on the indoor building, the, the sponsorship and words will be illuminated, halo lit, which would be similar to what the project signs were.
Okay, but is it possible to be able to see what basically the lighting would be on that whole area as far as like the lighting from the signage and the lighting from the parking and the lighting from the security and the lighting from the poles that are 90 feet and the lighting from the, it's like a lot of lighting. And I really, I mean, the black and white is fine, but that doesn't really, it doesn't give you a picture really how, I mean, it's gonna, is it gonna look like a ping ball game, you know? Lights all over the place, really, or?
The, the, this, the lighting on the building itself is, you know, is low-level lighting, it's, you know, like you said, it's like the project signs. You can see in the, in this, this sheet, sheet 10 of 13 of, of exhibit.
23.
23, just for the record. On the bottom, you can see that K, or maybe it's an R, you can see how it's illuminated behind. So that, you know, that is the type of illumination of that lighting that will occur. The parking lot lighting is enough to light the parking lot and provide safety and security for people who are parked there, but it is not overlit. And then those lights are not going to be on all night, which I testified to, except for those few security lights. And Mr. Zeller testified to the field lighting. And, you know, there's only a number of the fields that are lit. And, and I think Mr. Amorosa talked about how often they would be, that those fields would be lit. So I was not here for that night, so I don't wanna, you know, talk about that. But, you know, it's not like everything is illuminated all at once.
Okay, because, yeah, it would have, it's, ideally, it would have been great to actually see what the lighting was gonna look like, so we have a better idea. Because, you know, some was in color and some was in black and white and, you know, a lot of the stuff tonight was in black and white, so anyway. So the parking lot, the parking lights, you said there were gonna be, for the parking lights, it's gonna be 33 poles, 33 poles?
33 fixtures.
33 fixtures.
Some of those poles have twin, have two fixtures on them, I don't know how many poles. But, you know, that illumination, you know, it goes to zero well before you get to Stockton, before you get to any of the residential properties.
Okay, and the security, you didn't know how?
The security, we have to work with Red Bulls and the township on exactly which fixtures would be illuminated. But most likely they're, well, we have to work with the township on that.
All right, that's all, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, next? We're still going.
Still going? Brian Morgan?
Oh, we should take a break now then. Yeah, let's take a five-minute break and then we'll come back and figure out what we're gonna do.
This meeting is being recorded.
Okay, here we go. It's the nun?
Here.
Mr. D'Orfi?
Here.
Ms. Murphy?
Here.
It's Ben Order?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Alessa?
Here.
Mr. Flowers?
Here.
Here.
Mr. Warner?
I am here.
Mr. Slate?
Here.
Mr. Fischinger?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
And I, Sonia Santiago, here.
And I'm here as well.
Oh, Mr. Benoit.
How'd it go, man?
He, she got you last time too.
Okay. Public comment, questions, next witness? Please say your name and.
So Brian Morgan, 24 Green Knolls, I have a question and then commentary. So I apologize, I was, missed the first hour coaching my kid. I heard that Field 9 is no longer gonna be built. When Mr. Amoroso was asked the question if they considered not having Field 9, his suggested alternative was to allow parking for Field 5. Is that now going to be under consideration?
You mean parking where Field 9 is?
No, Field 5. So he had said, if you don't have Field 9, we would need to make parking available for Field 5, which is where by the basketball court area.
I think that must be like a misunderstanding.
So I just wanted.
The parking for Field 9 was at Field 9 and we're gonna remove it all.
I understand that, he said those players that would need to be playing there would need easier access to Field 5. So he suggested parking by Field 5 as one of the alternatives he mentioned. I just want to get a guarantee that you're not gonna build more parking near Field 5.
One plan has parking where the women's pro lot is. So until the women's pro buildings are built, there would be a surface lot there, that's in the application. What Mr. Rasiopis said tonight was pretty much everything east of Stockton, it's Field 9. The parking for Field 9 has been withdrawn from the application. However, there will be some site work in that area, so we don't want to give you the impression that there won't be any shovels or anything going on there.
I'm more focused on the long-term impact of that Field 5 area by where the women's. So you're saying once the women's facility is built, there'll be no more parking lot area and there'll be no other concessions to that area to accommodate the fact that you don't have that field on Field 9?
The women's building has a parking lot with it as well.
But is that for a comedy, academy players?
I'll change it this way, I think it's easier that there are no changes to the current plan based on the withdrawal, as I described it, of Field 9.
Okay, okay, that's what I wanted, so the, so a safe assumption would be there will not be a swarm of academy cars coming closer to where that women's facility is, because they're not gonna be coming to Field 9.
No, the academy activity will still be in the main parking lot, which is what's shown on the exhibit on the, on the screen.
Sorry, so then, I'm sorry, so then who was gonna be at Field 9 exactly? Was it academy or what was that called, was it camps?
Youth camps.
Youth camps, okay. So instead of me, replace the word academy, are field camp attendees going to be, is there gonna be parking accommodating there by, by Field 5?
They will, youth camps activity will also be dropped off or they will park in the main parking lot.
And that is all?
That is all.
And there's no future parking lot accommodations? I just want to make sure I'm addressing that comment by Mr. Amoroso, that there's not gonna be any further accommodation, that all the parking will be the main parking lot?
Correct.
Thank you, okay, I have some commentary.
Do you swear to God or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, please proceed.
Okay, so again, appreciate all the time that the Red Bulls have done with their outreach. Again, I was, I spoke with Mr. Amoroso several times throughout the year. I like that he listened to a lot of the input from the township professionals. The environmental commission report was addressed by the lighting and some resident impact, the fact that you removed Field 9, I think that's fantastic that you're trying to accommodate the residents' concerns. Again, I still, I still do feel that there's quite a few negative impacts. Some of my neighbors raised some of those direct ones. I just wanted to kind of paint a picture that, how I see this development being right across the street from where this development's gonna happen. Right now, I come out my house, it's. Right now, I come out my house, it's dark, I've been at this house sixteen years, love it, never even realized for years that Honeywell was even there, it's before Google Maps, so I didn't even know that it was there. So, sometimes in the wintertime, you might be able to see a building there, but there was never any lights, never any noise, and quiet, tranquil suburbia, it was fantastic, and still is fantastic, love it. Weekends quiet, nighttime's dark. I was unable to attend that meeting that Mr. Amoroso came, and really unfortunate, where he was describing the schedule of what the field usage would be to get an understanding about, okay, we're gonna be now having lights from potentially what is now like four-thirty to ten o'clock, that's five and a half hours in this wintertime, with almost no protection because all the deciduous trees have lost their leaves. And so I was encouraged by one of the metrics of his schedule, saying that, okay, in January, there's really only one night a week that's on that schedule, that said they're gonna have the lights on until about ten o'clock. That seemed fantastic, although, that's January, it's one sample size, I don't really know. In the fall, spring, it's about three to four nights, and in the summer, it's about three to four nights as well. If you bring that earlier, to about eight-thirty, you have the lights on about six nights a week in the spring and fall, and about two in the winter. So, two seems reasonable, probably later, more than I would prefer, but my concern is, if the board is going to approve tonight, then an approval would mean there is nothing stopping the Red Bulls from having lights on till ten o'clock every night of the year. There's no restrictions whatsoever. And so really, the question is to the board, would you approve this if the lights are gonna be on in a residential area every night for three-hundred-and-sixty-five days of the year? My concern is that there's no restrictions whatsoever on the hours of operation, and so while we have a hint of what the schedule would be, and however confident that they are that it shouldn't change too much, it'd be nice to get something written that there's not going to be a disruption of just losing our nighttime, right? So, again, like I said, the approval of the board gives them access, then the Red Bulls to have these lights on till ten o'clock every single night, that is a major, major fear, right? So, it's just, you lose nighttime, you come home, gotta pick up my kid from the high school at nine o'clock, I come out, it's supposed to be night, I see lights everywhere, it just shatters what the tranquility of the neighborhood would be. And again, if it's once or twice a week, okay, some nights, a good time, a good chunk of the time you don't have it, but if you have it all the time, it's just very frustrating, and just, it's scary to think about what we're losing as a neighborhood if that becomes the case. And again, Mr. Tangle mentioned, which I appreciated him mentioning, is that, just when Mrs. Bird, the architect, pointed out that the facility was, a neighborhood that actually really wanted them there, was the quote, and I feel like it's very disingenuous, because, again, if we just have professionals at this Red Bulls area that are playing during the day, personally, I actually have no problem with it. It's, what I have a problem with is losing my night, and that's really my main concern, and actually, not just night, with the lighting, you have the concerns of the, the public address system, and whatever other events might be happening, whistles and other stuff, but, again, the concern's primarily the evening lights. Again, another, another friend I was talking to, he's like, oh yeah, don't, can't you also see the fireworks over at that golf course that's over there? And, yeah, we can, but very likely, that's also gone, something that we would miss, because lights would kinda drown those out, if they happened during the evening. So, yeah, so really, my, my only comment is, and question, and actually pleading, I was not, unable to attend that meeting with Mr. Amoroso to ask for some concessions on those hours of operation, but I'm asking the board, and I'm asking the Red Bulls to please consider specifically either reducing it from ten o'clock to nine o'clock, or somehow getting in writing that you're not going to have these lights on every night for three-hundred-and-sixty-five days, and at least have, say, a winter schedule where, if it's gonna be more than two, at most three days a week, they ask for a special permission, or something along those lines, that can just give us some confidence that we're not losing our night. I think that was all I had.
That was five minutes.
I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Joe Sacola, twenty-three, Normandy Parkway, effectively Featherlay and Normandy Parkway, and you can sign me in, or whatever you wanna do.
That, can you first...
Joe Sacola, S-U-K-O-L-A.
I'm sorry, one, one more time, sir.
S-U-K-O-L-A.
Thank you, please raise your right hand, do you swear to God or affirm testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah, and it's also my opinion, but yes.
You're so... You weren't in, you could give facts, opinions, anything you like.
All right, I will. So here's the thing, I've been living in, living at twenty-three Normandy Parkway with my wife for about sixteen, seventeen years, Featherlay, Normandy Parkway, Green Knoll, that's all residential. And down the street, Columbia Turnpike, there was a, there was a, Honeywell used to exist, actually, it was Allied Signal, and I worked there. In fact, the reason I'm here from Chicago is because I worked for Allied Signal, beautiful area, but then Morris Township decided, well, we're gonna put two-hundred-and-thirty-four very nice luxury townhomes up there. Okay, that's great. So now you've made what's residential at Normandy Parkway, Featherlay, and Green Knolls residential, it's always been that way, but also now, you've made it even more residential. And now you wanna put a sports complex in there. I don't, I'm not a soccer fan, but I don't have anything against the Red Bulls, but they've got a nice facility on Melanie Lane, right by the FedEx over there, that I see it all the time. The thing is, and I think it's important, and Morris Township understands this, that you hear from your constituents, and I appreciate you all acting in the capacities you act, probably without any pay, but people don't want this, real macro, they don't want it, and, and it's, it's gonna be detrimental to the neighborhood, it's gonna reduce property values, and it's gonna be very obnoxious, even though they're gonna try to do everything they can, it's gonna be obnoxious. And, so I'm saying, no, you don't want that. We also don't want, didn't want the storage facility, we don't want, if there's gonna be some kind of a cell tower. And I digress a bit, I really don't want the green sidewalks at Normandy Parkway either. But the point is, this is something, and I've talked to lots of people, they don't want this, just so you know, and it's, it's feedback that, as a constituent, you ought to know that, if you haven't figured it out by now. That's all I really have to say, I just don't think it has any place in a residential area that was made more residential by adding two-hundred-and-thirty-four luxury townhouses. Okay, anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, next? I'm sorry, Miss, I mean, you've really taken up a lot of time already, you have more?
Yes, but you changed the rules just tonight, that we could do questions and comments. It used to be, I had my traffic questions, figuring I was gonna do my traffic questions...
But I asked everyone to spend five minutes, you already took about fifteen minutes.
I've got it, I have got it down, you got it, no, it is, I've got it really down to a science. It will be, I've crossed out a lot of stuff, and I have information that you need to know before you make your deliberation. Sue Sauchelli, S-A-U-C-H-E-L-L-I, nine Green Knolls Road. So until the rules got changed tonight, our hands were tied.
Miss Sauchelli, would you like me to swear you in or not?
Oh yes, please do, 'cause I have information.
Okay. Do you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, please proceed.
So help me God. So, our hands were tied, that we weren't able to give real-time information, so now I'm giving you the information that the board needs to know. Such as the statement from the Red Bulls complex, that the Red Bulls say that the Red Bulls complex is not situated within the airport flight path, but we are very close. Anyone in our neighborhood will tell you that planes fly right over our houses and the Honeywell property, but since you would consider that hearsay, I contacted Darren Large, accredited airport executive, who is a director of facilities and operations at Morris Town Airport, and here's the information you need to know. His reply was, the proposed facility is located underneath the traffic pattern for runway five. The smaller traffic, and those utilizing the traffic pattern for training activities, would be the ones who would fly over most. The larger jet traffic are generally on straight-in approaches to runway five and twenty-three, and would not really be impacted. So the only thing their eighty-foot rooftop logo would be good for is assisting pilots to line up for final approach. Another thing the board needs to know, is that until I made my initial contact with Mr. Large on September seventh, which was only two months ago, he had not been contacted by anyone from the Bulls or their engineers, and had no information on their lighting or the construction plans. Site remediation information, after the September application meeting, when I was not able to properly present my thoughts in the form of questions, I was true to my word, and I contacted the NJDEP. After speaking with Deanna Hall and Claire Whitaker, I was quickly put in touch with Honeywell representatives. I had a one-hour phone call, conference call, with Helen Fahey, the senior remediation manager for Honeywell and remediation and redevelopment group, and Ted Toscos of Jacobs Engineering Group, who was the LSRP assigned to the Honeywell property. Both have worked on this project for at least fifteen years, and are very familiar with the issues, and here's the information you need to know. My major concerns about multiple active remediated sites was not as bad as I thought, and I am strong enough to admit that, but I still had some concerns that warranted follow-up by Helen and Ted. Another thing the board needs to know, is that as of the end of September, when we had our conversation, neither Helen or Ted had been contacted by Mr. Barrington. They were aware of his group, but that was it. Except for them hearing the initial media blitz by the Red Bulls about their new complex plans, they had no contact from anyone. I am bewildered as to how an entire engineering plan could be formulated, submitted, and presented without consulting these two professionals. Sadly, because I was the first one offering detailed information from the Red Bull site application, neither of them was aware that this was a phased construction, and that the SMW-3 and its semi-volatile organic compounds would not be capped until Phase Two, which gets me wondering, what will that, how will that one acre area be protected from construction traffic during Phase One? And what about the children and adults running around who'll be using the adjacent fields until it is properly capped? As a clarification, trucking treated water off the Honeywell site does not occur. Whether the underground treatment plant is still in full operation mode, they did not know offhand. Also, because Helen and Ted are not automatically notified, I strongly suggest you invite these two experts to the pre-construction meeting that is performed with the Morris County Soil Conservation Group, and I have their contact information that I would like to please submit to you now. We get this signed together, I have multiple partners, but these people need to be notified. Noise abatement, you've been hearing it from all of us, and we always keep hearing, the noise will be within the required specifications, that's not good enough, and that sports court with the bouncing balls just adds another layer of annoyance. If there are any doubters, please give me your home address, and I'll swing by on a nice, quiet night with a few of my friends and a portable basketball net, and I'm sure your neighbors will be calling the police promptly. The Red Bulls want to be good neighbors, either move sports court over to the isolated area on Prescott Road, that you have denoted on the site plan as goalie, where only the golfers may hear it, or put up the accoustablock fencing. Yes, it may be slightly expensive, but the fencing will only be effective along the west service drive anyway, due to the elevations on the rest of the property. And remember, this goes for both the planning board and the Bulls. There is a massive difference between working there and living there. None of you will be impacted by the traffic, Academy training, and games seven days a week. None of you. Nobody, except us. We will not even have a quiet Sunday to decompress and recharge. Red Bulls want to be really good neighbors?
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is five, it's been five minutes.
Hey, I'm most done, give me a break.
How much time do you need?
I got this much more. We are people, we are not numbers. We deserve peaceful, quality, outdoor time in our lives also. Even the trail around the perimeter will no longer be a quiet nature walk after ten AM on any morning. This is not a rubber stamp approval. Know that when you vote yes, you will be permanently altering the lifestyle of multiple surrounding residential families that you are supposed to protect. If you're thinking, my child plays soccer, and this will be good, explain to me how. The Bulls are counting this as the premier soccer academy for North America, it is a private organization, and not municipal fields with town-sponsored summer camps. It is for the young, advanced players. Unless you have a soccer prodigy in your family, your child will most likely not ever play on those fields. Living in Morris Township is not going to give you a free pass. And lastly, until the boards, until the Red Bulls can prove to me differently, I am going to think of them from now on as the Red Bulldozers. Taking the little person, running him over, and leaving a flattened path in his wake. Thank you for your time.
Any other members of the public? Please say your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Mary Gorse, and my address is twenty-three Normandy Parkway, and I will raise my hand.
Do you swear to God or affirm testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I, yes.
Thank you.
Very briefly, you mentioned something about the intersection of Columbia Road or Turnpike and Normandy Parkway as not being a dangerous corner. When, when we were all in here for the Honeywell meetings, about the two-hundred-and-thirty-four units, townhomes, it was stated by the traffic person there that that was an F-intersection. Also, even worse, is the other end, Normandy, not Normandy, excuse me, Columbia Turnpike and Park, really, really horrible. So you're, you're adding more traffic between two really horrible intersections. We, on Normandy Parkway, I'm about a block from that corner, every so often, you know, bam, it's just a bad intersection. They've changed it, I think, at least three times, maybe more, I've been there seventeen years, so, you know, they tried to make it better, but the last one they did, I think, made it worse, I think the time before that was good. Anyway, so, a little comment about that. Now, for the board, this is, you know, I've been there seventeen years, there've been people forty years, and thirty years, and things like that, and this is their home, this is where they wanna relax, and this is not appropriate for a residential area. You know, we want to be able to have a little party, a little get-together, you know, on the weekends, and not have all this screaming and hollering, or whatever will happen there. And we are the furthest away of many of the people that are here. If I bought one of the townhomes and I lived on your street, I'd just, my head would've exploded, anyway. So, please, please, please consider that this is a residential area. I have been on Melanie Lane at midnight with all the lights on, and nobody's there. So, you know, you really, really need, there's another way to get rattleballs. These people, maybe, I shouldn't speak for them, I'll say for myself, I would prefer having office buildings there, personally, and everybody else can speak for themselves, but that's what everybody was told, that bought there. I'm not one of those people that bought there, but there are lots of people here that have, so that's what they were told, and that's what you should stick to, a residential. If you don't want the office buildings, then put in more townhomes, it's residential. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again, this will be very brief.
Please, because we've already had, you know, you've had time.
I know I have, but I just wanna say one last thing, if you please, Patricia Collins, four Green Knolls Road. I appreciate everybody on the board, because you're residents, taxpayers like us, you give your time, very much appreciated. We are appealing to you not to rush this through until you really consider what was just said by all the neighbors, about, like, twenty-four-seven, close to midnight or whatever, reduce the hours, reduce the days. It was originally proposed by the Red Bulls to do that, so please, consider our lifestyle. Like, I'm here almost fifty years, and it's... and it's, it's a tranquil place. Love it, love it, love it. And this is really upsetting to our own neighbor and our way of life. So please consider cutting back on the time and the noise, et cetera. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I have three minutes?
Very quick, very quick, please.
Rich Tangle again, 16 Fathelay Road. Before I retired, I was the regional manager of New Jersey for Jacobs Engineering Group. We had the building at 299 Madison, one of our buildings in New Jersey. I was the manager of all the buildings, including that one. And while we, we owned that building at one time, there was some covenants we had to follow. Parking light lots off 8 o'clock. We told employees, park your car close to the building, so the building lighting could illuminate where they had to go to their car. Maybe you could do something like that here. Our window blinds had to be closed after the cleaning people were done. So the office lights didn't come out, and that's like the dormitory here, that's going to be all lit up every room. So have them close the blinds at night, so that light doesn't impact the residents there. And the residents used to call us and say, you're not closing your blinds, you're not shutting the parking lot lights off. You know, that was something we heard from the residents at. And to be a good neighbor, we tried, we complied. Then the building wasn't ours anymore, and it was the next management company to deal with that. But anyhow, and then the town has said no, even to a neighbor or a commercial resident like us, business resident. We wanted to put a slip ramp into Glen, so our employees didn't have to make that dangerous left onto Madison, because a new employee got T-boned a first day leaving the office, almost got killed. We were told, don't bother coming to, bringing that to the township. No, you're not going to get approval. So we weren't able to get that slip lamp to get to that light at Old Glen in Madison. So okay, we live with it, you know. But anyhow, so you have the power to do things and approve things, of course, but you could also deny. And just some current consideration for the consideration of the residents here would be appreciated. So, thank you.
Thank you. So at this point, I'll close. A couple of comment period. We'll adjourn until the next meeting to do our deliberations and phone questions.
We're going to be carrying?
We'll carry this. I think we have a meeting scheduled, Dave?
We scheduled for, we're carrying solely for deliberations and a vote, is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
Correct. Well, that includes questions from the board.
Hello?
I'm here.
I'd like to do my closing at the next meeting.
Right, that's, that's.
That's included.
Yep. They, so we're carrying for a summation and deliberations and vote. The direct testimony and the public testimony has concluded. My understanding, Sonia, is that, well, is my understanding correct that there's a special meeting that's scheduled or to be scheduled? One week from this evening, if I understood correctly, there was some discussion. Where are we on that?
Yes. Let me see. Mr. Alessio, are you available on the 14th?
I'm available on the 14th.
Me too.
You available?
Yes.
It's open to the public, but not for questions and comments. Yeah.
Yes. Okay. So the 14 will be?
Do we, do we know if we have all the board members who are here this evening, including?
Mr. Flowers.
Mr. Flowers.
Oh, Mr. Flowers. Mr. Flowers is available.
Yes, I'm available.
And Mr. By is available. Okay.
Assuming he qualifies himself by?
Exactly. Correct. And so is Ms., I don't know about Mr. Willen, Mr. Quillen. Okay.
So the expectation is we'll have at least eight board members who are qualified to vote, if not more, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Then we're carrying, as I understand it, Mr. Chairman, to November 14th.
Yes.
One week from this evening, 7 p.m., the same location, the municipal building, with the understanding that there'll be a summation by applicants' counsel and a deliberation and vote by the board. And that is the only item on the agenda for that meeting, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Warner.
That would be the announcement, Mr. Chairman, if I got it correct.
Would it be possible, this is a question, to, I assume you'll have a list of the criteria for approval, right?
Well, I will, I will have a list, and then I think, Steve, you'll, you'll tell me if my list is correct. My summation will include a list.
Yeah, you're, I, I assume, Ms., I think Mr. Raciopi is referring to a list of conditions of approval.
Conditions, I'm sorry, yes.
Approval. I didn't know.
I meant conditions.
If that's what you were, okay, then.
Sorry.
I have, I actually have one already that I've added to this evening. In the event, in the event, there's approval. As the board knows, you should always consider all the conditions of approval, because you're never deciding whether it's a complete approval or denial. You're considering whether it's an approval with conditions or denial. So just by virtue of the fact that there will be a list of conditions for the board to consider, doesn't mean anybody's prejudged the case, of course.
Of course. But what I'm saying is, for deliberations, it would be helpful to see the conditions prior to the deliberations, if possible.
No, I, I will have a list, and if applicants' counsel wants to coordinate and confirm, we can have a.
But do we, the board members, get it before next Monday, or, or does it, is it shared at that meeting?
It's normally, I normally go through it at the meeting, but if the board wishes me to have it in advance of the meeting, I'll do my best.
Okay, thank you.
It would be helpful, if possible.
I will, I will do anything if it's possible. It's my goal to help.
Thank you.
I'll plan on doing that.
Mr. Raciopi? Would you grant the board an extension of time, please?
Yes, we do.
It's through when, Mr. Raciopi?
November 14th.
Midnight? Okay. Well, please send me an email so we have it in writing. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that was the only thing on the agenda, right?
Mr. Chairman?
My agenda went. My agenda disappeared.
Are we meeting on the 21st?
Yes. That's a regular scheduled meeting.
And you have applicant for that night?
Yes.
Busy November.
We gotta get paid overtime for that meeting?
Yeah.
There's three applications on that night. We also have a master plan consistency.
How can we hear three on one night? I'd like to know.
Three applications on November the 21st.
That makes no sense at all. Besides that, I'm unavailable. So, there you go. I have a board of it. Board of it, yeah. Thank you.
Then a large application, so for small.
Public comments from the public who have something to say other than what was discussed on this application this evening? Mr. Quinn? Okay, hearing that? Motion to adjourn? All in favor? Hi. See you next week.